Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Morning, everybody, and welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We are going to begin this meeting by invoking God's presence on these proceedings. And I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Gary Allen if he will lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Join us as we pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you now asking your guidance as we deliberate the business of your city. We ask your blessings on our mayor, city manager, and counselors, and all those we work with in city government. Keep them safe as they conduct their work each day. Challenge us as we reach higher so that we can be the best we can be to represent you in our community, and encourage each other through all we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Now, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we're going to hope that the Georgia state flag tells the United States flag that we did pledge our allegiance. I guess we forgot that one this morning. But anyway, welcome. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from March 30th. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, is her second, from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, the minutes are approved. All right, we have a special guest with us this morning who's going to be one of those receiving a proclamation recognizing National Safe Digging Month. And Carolyn Bermudez, is Ms. Bermudez here? Is the new leader of Liberty Utilities, comes to us from Florida. And we are delighted to have her here. This is our first opportunity, I think, to meet her. And I'm not sure, she might be still in the parking lot, so we'll circle back. Counselor Huff, it's okay with you, let's circle back with that once she arrives. Sir?
That would be fine. I said, if we'd move the next one up?
Yep, we will do that. Also want to give a little update on COVID-19. I know the weather's turned warmer and people are getting, taking a step towards normalcy. They've been, I know Karen and I, we've had our shots, and she and I have visited the first restaurant we've visited and eaten indoors since February of 2020. So we're starting to see people getting inoculated, and that is, without a doubt, the best and biggest weapon that we have at our disposal to try to get our community back to a medical normal and to a financial normal. So we've seen, you've heard a lot about the additional strains that have made it here from other parts of the world. Here in our area, we have not really seen a spike in any numbers. We were watching carefully after the Easter celebration to see if we saw any results and show up in the positivity of the testing. The percentage of people tested is going up, but I think, quite frankly, that's because there are few people being tested. It's only people who are severely symptomatic that are still going to have the COVID-19 test administered. We continue to stay at a manageable level. We're at 19 cases on our rolling seven-day average. Our threshold that we're watching, that we utilized when we placed the mask mandate in effect, and it still is in effect, and it's still going down. We're about 139, 140. Soon as we get to a level below 100 cases per 100,000 individuals over a 14-day period, it's likely we will ask you to consider removing that mask mandate. We have had 381 individuals that live in this county pass away, and their death has been attributed to, at least in part, COVID-19. So we are seeing a plateau, a plateauing of our numbers, which means our citizens, despite the fact that the governor has relaxed his orders and allowed people to go back to just about normal distancing within restaurants, and he has removed his limit on the number of people that can gather in outdoor events. Our folks in Columbus are still being vigilant. They're still being, they're still being very aware of the potential impact of COVID-19. You know, it's one of those deals where we're getting very, very close to the end of this, to where we can get back to just about normal compared to the way things have been for the last year. But it's important that we continue to kind of keep our foot on the gas, and still be aware of our social distancing, still be aware of our hygiene, making sure that we're washing our hands, and still wear masks when you are going to be within three to six feet of another individual. Because it has taken a toll medically, but again, as I said, it's taken a toll financially as well. Vaccines, as I mentioned, are a very big part of the solution. We have, we're so grateful to Jima and to the state of Georgia for putting one of the nine mass vaccination sites in Columbus. They have been doing an outstanding job. They are taking appointments in one line, and they're doing walk-ups in the other. So if you don't have an appointment, you can go down to the civic center and just get in line, and they will take care of administering your shot. They are getting creative, trying to find new ways to try to bring more people in. I think Jason Ritter said the other day, he is going to begin to stay open until about 7:00 on Thursday evenings to try to catch people who are not, who can't make it during the workday. And they're even going to open on a Saturday. We're looking at May 1st, I believe, is the date that they'll have a Saturday vaccination site. And don't forget, we still have the Department of Public Health partnering with our fire and EMTs and our paramedics who are administering shots throughout the week as well. So we're making the vaccine available. We've had about 52,000 residents, we've put about 52,000 doses in arms. About 22,000 to 23,000 of our residents have been fully vaccinated. But guys, we've got almost 200,000 people in Columbus. So at some point, we have to figure that everybody who wants the vaccine has had the vaccine. I don't know what that point is. I think we're still a month or so away from that, but at some point, we're going to have to begin to reopen our community and get back as close to normal as we can. So I would urge you, if you've been delaying getting that shot, go ahead and get it done. Go ahead and go to the civic center, or watch for some of the announcements with regards to the health department. And even our fire stations are going to begin holding neighborhood drive-throughs at some of the stations. Those will be announced as they become, as we are able to schedule them. So anyway, we thank you for what you've done, and I've got to throw a plug into our employees with the Columbus Consolidated Government. These folks have pushed through this pandemic, continued to deliver services under some very trying circumstances to you, the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and just could not be prouder of the way those folks have done their jobs and gone above and beyond in trying to make sure that things continued to be provided. All right. On a much more celebratory note, we have some champions in the house. We've had a pretty prolific high school basketball season. We had a couple of champions. In fact, Carver will be recognizing them, I think, at the next council meeting. But today, we've got the region champ, first-time-ever region champ, Pacelli Vikings in the house. And I'm going to ask them to come up to the podium. Their coach, their principal is here, so if we can get all those affiliated with the basketball team to gather behind your coach at the podium, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Huff and let him read the resolution, which I will present.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here this morning. To all of the players and the coaches, principal, I appreciate. I think your other title is president, I think, or something. President and principal of Pacelli High School. Thank you all for being here this morning. And the players, we just want to let you know, sometimes people are thinking about you when you don't know it. I bring greetings this morning from a 1991 graduate, a 2012 graduate, and a 2017 graduate. And those would represent my wife and my two boys. They send their best this morning. To make it real for the players, excuse me, I want you to understand why this is so important for your achievement this morning. My son, that graduated in 2017, was a part of the team that was 0 and 22. I want you to understand that. When you leave today, talk to Coach Cory Black about it, and he will explain to you the discipline that he put, he instilled in that team, and how well they played from week to week, even though they didn't win. And he was trying to instill in them the principles of real life. You don't win all the time, but you have to get back up and do it again. So when you finish this and enjoy this, and you get back to school, it's time to get back in the books, it's time to get back to your regular life, it's time to look for colleges, job opportunities, whatever's coming your way. But you have to get back up. The lesson to all of this is, you have to keep doing the same thing over and over again, if it works. If it works. If it's not working, let it go. So the resolution this morning is to congratulate you on a great season. And the resolution reads, whereas the Pacelli High School Varsity Boys Vikings Basketball Team made history this year by being the first-ever Pacelli basketball team to win a regional championship. Whereas the Varsity Boys Viking Basketball Team advanced to the Elite Eight in the Region 4A Georgia High School Association State Playoffs. Whereas the team's head coach, Cory Black, was named Region Basketball Coach of the Year. Whereas three of the team's seniors are committed to play sports at the collegiate level after graduating from Pacelli in May 2021. Whereas the team's record improved from 0 and 22 in 2018 to 18 and 4 in 2021. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, and Coach, I want you at the microphone to help me with the names and make sure I get it right. We hereby commend and congratulate the following members of the Pacelli High School Vikings Basketball Team. DeShawn Cates, Joshua Douglas, Travis Harper, David Lawson, John Thornton Jr., Keandre Harris, Keishon Fleechin, Justin Taylor, Kingston Salmon, Ian Matthews, TJ Smith, Pierre Summers, Travis Moore, Trey Hightower, Cody Dorsey, Head Coach Cory Black, Assistant Coach Tyler Wood, and Assistant Coach John Thornton Sr. Their advancement to the Elite Eight and region win in 2021 were outstanding accomplishments, and we wish them ever success in the future. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to each member of the Pacelli Vikings Basketball Team. I move for adoption.
All right, there's a motion, second to approve. All in favor, say aye, and please stand.
Aye.
I'm a 2003 graduate of Pacelli, and I just want to congratulate each of you, not just for what y'all are doing in the gym and on the fields, but academically. When I graduated Pacelli, there were talks about whether or not that school would exist. We had 34 people who graduated with me. And Principal Headmaster, President Collins, you have turned what was something that may not have existed and had been around Columbus for so long into a meteoric rise. You've turned this school academically around, and the coaches, I commend you because we never won any championships at tennis, we didn't win championships at football or basketball, and y'all are not just doing it on the field and in the gym, you're doing it academically. Y'all are producing kids who are graduating from college, and I am so proud of my alma mater, and I couldn't be more proud to be a graduate of Pacelli right now. And I just want to commend everyone who has participated in this rise because Pacelli is a school that everybody knows about now, and knows it well. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Tucker?
Good morning. On behalf of Megan Hatcher, who is a seventh grader, her mom loves the Vikings. I'm a proud Vikings parent. I'm so thankful to see you all up here. Thank you, Coach Black. One percent better.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this young lady sitting right here with the camera is a proud mama, or if she's what, but come to the front here, and so you can get them front-on.
If, you know, if there are any other parents or supporters here, if you would stand.
Oh, okay.
Gentlemen, outstanding job. You've made your school proud, you've made your parents and your teachers proud, you've made your city proud of you. We're very, very excited. Coach?
Thank y'all for having us. It's been a blessing to be able to coach this group of young men. Wouldn't be able to be standing here without our administration and our leader, Ms. Collins. Good group of basketball players, but even better people. All these people are going to be really successful, and I'm just thankful to be here, and thankful to be able to coach them. Thank y'all for having us.
Principal Collins, you have anything you want to say? And I'm going to bring these to you.
I'd just like to say, it's a great day to be a Viking, and we greatly appreciate this honor. And to our alum, Councilman Walker, and also Bruce Huff, and our wonderful, proud parent, we could not do it without the love and support and the prayers of all of you and in this great city. So Mayor Henderson, thank you for all you and the council do for us. We feel very safe and secure and cared about in Columbus, Georgia, so we want to thank you all for all you do for us as well. So thank you all, and I could not say enough. And aren't they cute? I mean, this is a smart, well-mannered, hard-working, dedicated group of young men and stellar coaches. So thank you on behalf of Pacelli.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's give them one more round of applause. Very good. I tell you, Columbus is the home of champions. Champions in the classroom, champions on the court, fields. Very, very proud of our young people. You know, it's a shame that too many times when we see headlines and we see stories across different media, it's always, not always, many times, pointing out the negative aspects of the young people in our city and in our country. I'm telling you, the good kids just so far outnumber the ones that are causing any kind of trouble. And you just saw a bunch of them right there that are doing great things for their school and for their city. All right, do we have the folks that we're going to receive the National Safe Digging Month proclamation here yet? All right, we'll hold on to that. We'll move on now to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Attorney?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The first item up this morning, Mayor, is an ordinance providing for the demolition of various structures, about 17 of them. We're going to call them out. There may be some slides up on the screen. If anybody's present in the audience on any of these properties I call out, please raise your hand or speak up if you want to come up to the podium. Mr. Pruitt's here to answer any questions. The first property listed is 1082 Lawyer's Lane, Roscoe Boutwell, owner. Any photos?
Yeah, there should be a presentation we can pull up. There we go.
All right. Don't see any hands on that one. 2346 Shelby Street, Earl and Alice Harrington owners. 4258 Meritus Drive, Grace Collinsworth owner. 2068 Mason Street, Charles Patrick owner. And 2500 Shaw Street, Victory Group LLC. All right, then 2631 Casita Road, Richard Redding and estate of Floyd Redding. Mister, I think we have one of the Reddings here, and the next one, 1014 Calvin Avenue, may also be Mr. Redding's estate. So if you want to address council and make a request on either one or both of these properties, tell them who you are, give them your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Danny Redding. I represent my grandfather's estate, Floyd Redding. I took over the estate at the end of 2019 after dealing with some legal issues regarding being able to take control of the estate. So at the moment, I have been working to get all of the estate resolved, getting properties sold, clearing up back taxes, and any demolition issues and things like that. At the moment, I am in discussions with Robert Scott here in the purchasing office regarding another property at 463 Brennan Road, and I'm looking right now to see if we can possibly do a package deal on Brennan Road for the city's use as well as 2631 Casita. So I'm open to discussion on that, seeing what we could do to possibly come up to a resolution to get all this resolved. If that's not a possibility, then I just ask for six months to be able to get everything taken care of.
Mr. Redding didn't get your address, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your residence, your address?
3129 Avon Drive, Columbus, Georgia.
Okay. All right. City manager Isaiah Hughley has come in?
I do, Mayor, and you know, I've been on this thing about blight in recent weeks. In fact, I had staff to put together a video with a parade of blighted properties. I travel Casita Road every day, every day, and I get to see this property. And I am adamantly opposed to even one-day extension. I know it's a council vote, and your vote will determine, but the people of Casita Road deserve better. And I don't want to see a one-day extension on this piece of blighted property. It's horrible. I mean, it is horrible.
I don't disagree with you one bit.
And I just, I can't stand to look at it, not an extra day if we don't have to. And I say, send the bulldozer and get it done would be my recommendation. I don't want to see an extension on this.
Well, I tell you, I think probably the best way to deal with this, Mr. Redding has indicated that he's working something out with Mr. Scott. I think it just stays on, it continues. We just let the process continue to move. We'll have it on second reading, urge council to approve the demolition. If you can get something worked out between now and then with the administration, I think that gives you an opportunity to work through them, but that way it doesn't slow down what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I understand exactly the issues there, and like I said, I didn't take over the estate until the end of 2019. I had some issues with being able to get heirs served and relatives, the paperwork that was needed to go through due process on my end, to be able to legally handle all of this myself.
Right.
So I've been working diligently this past year. I've sold 14 properties, cleared up back taxes, and I've been working diligently to get everything resolved.
And we appreciate that. We just, and while 2019 to today seems like a very short period of time, as the city manager pointed out, for the folks that live in that area, that's a long time to live with those types of things. And since I've been in office, in office, we've been focusing on getting rid of some of the blighted properties to try to deal with some of the crimes, some of the, you know, just trying to allow people to have more pride in where they live. So we recognize as the heir that you're trying to deal with this now, but what I would urge you to do is to work with Ryan, work with Rob, and see if you can get this facilitated. This will be on second reading in two weeks. And then even after it's approved then, there still will be a little bit of lag time before the demolition process itself occurs. So I think you've got time, if you can get something worked out through the administration, to get it handled on your own before they take it down.
Understood. And regarding 1014 Calvin, I've already ordered the asbestos inspection for that property to prepare for demolition. So I'm in the process of this week now filing the EPD 10-day permit, and that way I can then begin demolition on that one. I also do have an investor that might possibly purchase it for either demolition or renovation as well.
Well, and council's desire is just to get it cleaned up, whether it's torn down or whether it's remodeled, but to get something handled very quickly. So if you can do it quicker than we can do it...
That's my intention.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, those two remain on the list. We'll go down the other properties. Next one is 2439 Howe Avenue, Joseph Powell II owner. Don't see anybody. 235 Collins Drive, James Pearson, Melanie Smizowski owner. 802 Benning Drive, Flora Lyles owner. 303 48th Street, John Law owner. 4935 Buna Vista Road, estate of Cheryl Diane Harrington. 717 42nd Street, Paul Stallings owner. 918 38th Street, Charlie Hawkins owner. 1103 22nd Street, Covenant LLC. 1524 15th Avenue, Deborah and Larry Lee owners. And last one is 4738 12th Avenue, JL Johnson owner. Anybody present on any of those? Don't see any hands, Mayor. Mr. Pruitt, these 17 will stay on the list for the ordinance vote in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Counselor Garrett? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to, want to say, Mr. City Manager, I really appreciate your words earlier, and I will tell the audience, the viewing audience and others that as long as I've been on this council, the city manager has been very fair with all these notices that have been given to these various property owners. Again, I'd like to say there's a long history in all this. Usually the timeframe on these demolitions are two-plus years. People have plenty of time to get everything in order. A lot of times we get no documentation, we get no understanding, other than what we hear and what we see, and then at the eleventh hour, all of a sudden, people want to make decisions to get things rolling, and it just doesn't work that way when you've been given plenty, plenty of time on these, these matters. So, um, in saying that, the, which leads me to these demolitions, um, you know, there's some properties that are on this list, and I believe that there are property owners that are quite capable of taking care of these properties, whether it's demolishing the building that we have told them that it's just unacceptable, the city has told them it's unacceptable, or just these properties that need to be cleaned up. People are quite capable. And sometimes I get the impression that they kind of laugh at the city. They just kind of laugh at the city and just let the city go about it, knowing that, well, you know, I'm not going to do anything with the property, just sit there and let it ride out. Meanwhile, the taxpayers are carrying the, the load on, on having to deal with these, these properties that are causing an eyesore in our communities. I just, you know, is, number one, Mr. City Attorney, is, is there some way to, without going down the demolition process, or is the demolition process the only vehicle, that we can hold some of these people accountable and get them to go ahead and clean up these properties and get it done if they're capable, without having to go this process, without having to go through the legal process, without having to, uh, to utilize the taxpayers' funds? Are some of these that you, you know, the city has no other choice but to utilize funds to make it happen? I'm thinking about that. And second, to further the problem down the road, when the city goes in and takes these properties down, demolishes them, cleans them up, basically put a lien on the property. So there's a lien on the property for as long as it sits there. Are we, what are we doing with all these properties when they've been sitting out there for two, three, four years, and the taxpayers have not recollected their funds, which we can in turn go back and clean up more properties? What are we doing from that standpoint? Is there a process that, uh, it's my understanding that the city should have the authority to go in and take the property and then transfer it and then utilize that property, or get a nice home built on, or get some kind of development or some kind of housing or something put back on it appropriately? Mr. City Attorney, can you comment on those two, uh, two questions I just brought up?
Sure, I'll comment on both of them. Uh, the first one, you're talking about a statutory procedure that allows this demolition under state law that we've followed here for years. In Columbus, other counties across the state do the same thing. And it requires this forty-five day notice and a hearing before Mr. Pruitt, before it can come to the council for an ordinance to demolish. And the lien as cleanup costs are authorized by the state law. Now, as far as what happens to the properties, the city manager may have plans for some of the properties, but the city technically can foreclose on its lien on these properties. But usually, they are either put into a pot of properties that may be developed as one new project, they try to assemble properties, or they convey them to the land bank authority for some sort of development. And, um, now, City Manager, do you want to comment on any proposals or projects that are out there on these blighted properties?
Well, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And let me just say to you, Counselor Davis, I really appreciate your comments. I think you're right on point. And, um, and just the question that you've asked, um, I, I just, I couldn't agree with your thought process more on this subject. And so what I'd like to do is, is come back with a presentation that will share with you what we have on the books. Typically, we'll go out and demo a property, we put a lien on the property, and, and in some cases, that, that property may be valued at as little as five thousand dollars. And then we start to accumulate interest on what is owed as a result of that demolition. And in fifteen years or so, as it still sits there, um, the lien may have escalated to, let's say, twenty thousand dollars. Well, the property is valued at five, but because of interest accumulating over the years, it's now at twenty. Well, that property owner obviously is never going to come back and pay twenty thousand dollars for a piece of property that's valued at five thousand dollars. And so it's sitting there. And so the question is, you know, what do we do? Because we're now, we're going out and we're mowing that property because it gets overgrown. And, and so I want to come back to you with a presentation that, that, that talks about what's on the books and how we're dealing with them and how we recommend we go forward with dealing with those properties where we have liens. I think we, we may have more than three million dollars on the books of property with liens that we need to deal with. And so I think your question is, and, and thought process, I think you're very timely with it and, and, because it's, it's something that's, that's on my mind, that, because we can do better in Columbus, Georgia. We must do better. And, um, and so, and so we, with the parade of blighted properties, we're trying to push people with our cleanup effort regarding litter. We're trying to encourage people. I mean, this is our city. It belongs to us, and, and we should want to take care of it. And so if you don't mind, sir, I, I'd like to come back to this council and present that so that you can see and hear it, and the citizens can see. And I think we need to, um, change our approach going forward. We need to clean this problem up. It, it's a problem. And, uh, so we'll come back to you with what we propose as a solution.
And thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I really appreciate, appreciate that. And I want to highlight one more time, I will say, you have always been fair on these hearings, and I really appreciate that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Um, and you've been fair to everybody, and that's, should be noted, and noted in the records. It's always been like that. You treat everybody equal, fair, across the line. Um, Mr. City Attorney, I, I kind of didn't pick up on what you just said. Did you just say that there's no other way other than the course of this demolition process? Or can the city actually take some of these property owners quite capable of footing the bill and cleaning up their properties and having it done through the judicial system?
Well, certainly if they're violations of any code provision, building code or otherwise, they can be cited and taken to recorder's court, and the recorder's court judge can order demolition or other remediation as part of a sentence. So that's an option. But as far as getting the House demolished in an orderly fashion where there hadn't been citations, the state law allows this procedure to come to you for demolition ordinance. But, yeah, any owner that's a resident of Columbus can certainly be cited for violation of any code, and recorder's court can be very creative on their sentencing.
Well, do we have any process in place that we can determine, the city can determine that an individual or a property owner is quite capable of carrying the cost to clean the property up? And that they're not taking advantage of the city? Do we have anything in place on that?
No, the city manager may have more on his records on that as far as who, who owns the property, and they might be a known developer, they might not be.
Well, we absolutely know who own, owns every piece of property, especially those that we have a lien on them. And, and, and I, you know, on the surface, when you look at some of the names you own, it appears that, um, when I, you know, we had a recent property owner with, with dilapidated property, but if you own a yacht and you have, you know, property in resort areas of the country, but you got an old mobile home park that's, that looks like what you saw, you know, the, the assumption that I make from that is that you can afford to take care of this. And, and we have gone to court, and I think, I can tell you, we're willing to go, to go after people who, um, who, who live well in other parts of this community, but have economically depressed properties in certain parts of the community. And, and that is part of why I wanted to do the parade of homes. We need to expose them. We need to put it on YouTube, on CCGTV, with your name, with your, the address, and we're going to do whatever we got to do to push them to love every piece, every corner of the city, not just the part you, the corner that you live in. That's what we want.
Well, we can take a real close look at that. I imagine you will when you bring, bring this matter back to us. But, you know, it just seems like instead of the taxpayers giving foot with the bill and the burden, and then just being laughed at, with a property owner knowingly, they're not going to do anything on the property, they're not going, you know, they're just like, if you want it, you can have it, but you take care of the cost, I'm not going to deal with it. Knowing that it's going to call, the city's going to carry that load, which is probably, like you said, going to be three, four, five times what it really might cost, because there's just, it's apathy, I don't care, from the property owner. But if we switch that over where the burden is more on the property owner through the court system, maybe they'll think twice when they have to start paying legal fees and legal fees and, uh, attorneys' fees and other kind of things. Maybe we might get some action there. But at the same time, I do recognize that some people are quite capable of doing and others are not.
Right.
And so there is a difference. But, uh, I appreciate you letting me just share those thoughts with you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager and Mr. Pruitt, Mr. City Manager, when you come back to us with that report, would you include, once we demolish a, a building, then what does the city do with the property? The thing that I'm thinking about, Mr. City Manager, the, the example, is if you drive north on Second Avenue around Thirty-Eighth Street to Fortieth Street, at Thirty-Eighth Street and Second Avenue is the Mercy Med Farm. Further north on that block are several, um, empty lots. And I know that on the corner of Fortieth and Second Avenue, there was, a couple of years ago, a, um, house that we demolished. And it's just, the property now is just sitting there, and it's overgrown, and the trees are, uh, you know, I, I don't know what our obligation is then at that point. So would you come back to us as you bring this back and, and let us know? And Mr. Pruitt, um, if you want to drive up Second Avenue, you can readily see what I'm talking about. There are about two or three lots-
Yes.
...on the east side of Second Avenue that were, did have houses on them.
Mm-hmm.
And those houses through our, um, I believe, through our actions, were demolished.
Yes.
Then what?
Yeah.
What do we do then to take care of the property? It's, it's looks just, to me, just as bad as it did when the house was sitting there.
Yeah.
So would you, would you come back with us on that?
That will certainly be a part of, of this presentation. But I just, quickly, what we do is, when, you know, citizens complain that it's overgrown, we go out and we send a private contractor out to mow it, and, um, and then we add that to the lien that we have on that property for demolition. And so the amount just continues to grow, and that's why I think it's an excellent conversation and glad that Counselor Davis brought it up, because, um, we can't just keep doing what we've been doing. We got to, we got to fix it. And so we'll certainly bring that back.
Thank you.
Well, and another thing to kind of check on, I think be interesting to see, is how many of those lots are ever redeemed? I, I have no idea, but I bet you it's in single digits as far as percentage, because those lots that are typically underneath the properties that are demolished, they don't have enough value to recover even half of what we spend on the demolition. So, and I know other communities have used blight taxes, and Mr. City Attorney, maybe there's some way we could have some type of punitive fee put on if we do have to go through a foreclosure process. Um, I know in discussion about those in the past, they had to be identified in a targeted use that dealt with the property. And then I think another thing we need to do is, you know, we need, we need a more aggressive stance, frankly, on the part of the recorder, of the environmental judges, environmental court. Uh, we've, we've, I've seen people go through there and get two or three stays. Well, meanwhile, the neighborhood is suffering because these folks that they've called about are still doing the same thing they've been doing. So until, until we get a little more, I think, in, in line with what the residents are wanting to see happen in these communities through the, through the environmental court, we're never really going to make any, any progress in trying to clean up some of these places. So, so it's going to take a, it's going to take a, a sort of a coordinated effort among, among everybody and-
Yeah. And, uh, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, you said it, I think we were talking, maybe even yesterday, that you, um, were making comments about how you appreciate the reorganization that Ryan Pruitt has done with code enforcement, because it was piecemeal. And, you know, you got inspectors that only focus on certain things, and they go out and, and they focus on what they focus on. And when he consolidated, when they go out, they look at the whole picture, and they're going to cite you on everything that's, where it's, you know, they would initially say, I'm going to cite them for this, and then another inspector got to come out and cite, and cite them for something else on that same property. But now that he has consolidated, when one inspector go, goes out there, they handle everything. They'll get you for everything. And so you made the comments yesterday about Ryan Pruitt's approach to it, and I think that's a good first step, and then, you know, getting deeper into what Counselor Davis is talking about is, is where we need to go to kind of bring it all together.
I agree. Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, you made some valuable comments, but I would be one hundred percent, matter of fact, one hundred and ten percent in favor of getting those properties back on the tax rolls, and we can do that. We always talk about the matter with affordable housing or housing in Columbus. Here's an opportunity that we can partner with various agencies that can put houses on these properties and get them back on the tax rolls. And if we have the ability to do that, we might want to just think about changing gears and, and see if we can, we can make a difference that way versus just exasperating taxpayer funds that it takes to clean all this up, and it just sits there. That doesn't make any sense.
I agree, and I think it's part of the, you'll probably, I don't want to speak for the city manager, but you'll probably see part of his presentation be around what the land bank is doing in conjunction with some of the other organizations like NeighborWorks, tremendous effort going along Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, over in North Highland area. And, and we do participate through the land bank to be able to get, I think the challenge for us that you have clearly stated is how do we get more aggressive on the intake, getting those properties, getting control of them quicker, so that the meter doesn't just keep running and they don't continue to deteriorate and become overgrown? Because, Mr. Pruitt, unless I'm mistaken, we will cite people for grass being too high, but we don't typically go tell them about shrubbery and bushes and things of that nature.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the ordinance refers to grasses, it doesn't cover shrubs or trees.
We may need to revisit that as well. Sounds like, sounds like we're going to be looking forward to a really in-depth update on it.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I, I was just told that we have three hundred and twenty-eight properties on the list- list with liens, uh, that we need to deal with.
All right, uh, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, have we made any progress on our request of vehicles in, you know, excessive vehicles on a property? We were gonna request, um, something, I think from state, that we could change that?
Well, I don't know, I'd have to yield to the City Attorney as I don't know what would be considered too many vehicles on a property. I, I know that we have, we've had some conversation about, and especially in the historic district, as to whether they can, uh, park in front yards and so forth, so on, but I don't know that there is any determination of what would be too many vehicles, if you will, I don't know what-
There's, there's an ordinance on junk vehicles and, uh-
Not junk, but too many.
Yeah.
If, if a person has six vehicles and a, and a single family-
As long as they're not selling them and become a used car dealer, then, yeah, you can own them and park them on your property, but we asked the state about towing, you know, that was on the legislative, uh, agenda request, and the state did not take action on counsel's request to make it easier to tow some of these vehicles.
Okay, so can we do, are we allowed to do an ordinance where, you know, you can't park on the yard, you know, on, in the front yard, you can't, you know, you can't have vehicles that don't have license plates or are not operable? I mean, is that too, um, aggressive and, or-
There, there are some zoning rules on parking on private property, but as far as, you know, going too heavy on restricting where people can park on their own property, there's a fine line in the zoning law, I mean, you can't restrict all of their access or all their parking, but we do have some rules on that in the UDO about where you're supposed to park vehicles, whether they're regular or, you know, commercial-type trailers.
And-
And citations are written, uh, on that pretty frequently when people are violating the large commercial vehicle rules in neighborhoods.
Yeah, and, and we do have criteria for junk, what we consider junk vehicles, and, and it, and it has to meet two of the, let's say, six criteria, you know, and, and not having a current tag, and if the vehicle won't start, if it has those two, it's a junk vehicle.
And what's, what does the ordinance say about a junk vehicle on private property? Because, I mean, as a Realtor, I'm, I'm pretty sensitive to property rights.
Well, we enforce, if you've got a junk vehicle on your private property, we're going to enforce against you.
And what's the enforcement?
We're gonna cite you and give you 10 days to comply and, and make it not be a junk vehicle, and we're gonna go back and check to see if it's still a junk vehicle, and if it is, we're gonna bring you to court.
Okay.
Right, and when that happens, the, the Recorder's Court has the power also to make part of that sentence, you know, abate that nuisance, uh, whatever you wanna call it, and get the vehicle in working order or get it moved.
So if, so if a neighbor or somebody sees, um, junk vehicles on a property, who do they contact? Codes and inspections?
They, they contact, they go through 311 and report a junk vehicle on a property. We're gonna have special enforcement go out to check to see if it's a junk vehicle.
Okay.
And if it is, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a request to comply, we give you, let's say, 10 days to comply, and we'll be back.
Okay.
We come back and you have it, and we determine that it's still a junk vehicle, we're gonna issue you a, a court citation.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Appears to be all the questions.
Okay, and one last comment on that, Mayor, before we leave property. I mentioned the Land Bank Authority earlier, and you did too, that is one of your best tools, if you can get some of these properties that are either tax delinquent or weed lien delinquent, or both, foreclosed upon, uh, and then they can be transferred to the Land Bank Authority. The Land Bank Authority has power to extinguish liens such as weed liens, demolition liens, and property taxes themselves. Uh, and once they do that, they can turn around and sell to a low or moderate income housing developer, they can recoup some of their costs, but then they try to get these things back on the tax rolls, so that's one of your best tools, it's there in the box, and of course, it needs to be used more, you just gotta get these properties transferred to the Land Bank Authority.
All right, thanks, sir. Counselor Garrett?
Mr. City Attorney, excuse me, I'll take a sip of water. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, could you give us an update at some point on what our, our options are on condemnation? Uh, I remember First Baptist, and I work downtown, and the Ralston, I have, I have knowledge that it's being transferred back and forth between shell corporations again, uh, after everything we've gone through to try and rehab that property, and, uh, I, I want to know what actions we can take as a city to make that property available to someone who actually rehab it, turn it into a good property, preserve its historic value, and prevent the shell game corporations from doing what they're doing, because we've seen it before, it's happened nationwide when we've looked into this, that company that owned it nationally, and I would like to know what our options as a council are.
Well, Mayor, do you wanna comment on that? I know we've had some interest and, uh, don't know that the city is interested in becoming the owner and landlord of that property, but-
Yeah, we, uh, we actually should be able to make an announcement with regards to the disposition of the Ralston within the next 15 to 30 days. Uh, there has been, uh, there was a lot of interest in the, in the Ralston, it was, it was passed on to a receiver, uh, who was charged with trying to recover as much as they could for the people who had invested in the bonds. Uh, we had spoken with a number of people, the city had, and, and I, I think where we are right now, there is an individual who actually operates enterprises currently in Columbus, so has a track record here, and also a track record in other parts of the community, or, excuse me, country, uh, of, uh, of rehabbing and, and bringing these multi-use facilities, uh, back up to a, a quality level, certainly much higher than where it was. And, uh, we can't announce anything just yet simply because of the stage that it's in, uh, we have, we have not heard anything about a shell company, the individual that we have been, uh, dealing with. That has not been a concern, uh, so we're, we're excited about where the Ralston is headed, and, and that is towards renovation, rehabilitation, and still being able to serve some of the folks who desperately need serving in our community. I don't know if, um, the City Manager or Deputy City Manager Hodge have any additional comments, but, uh, I, I, I think that, uh, some of those concerns are misplaced.
Okay, that all we had on that one. We'll, um, bring that back, Mayor, the demolition properties in two weeks for a vote on that ordinance. Next item up, um, Ms. Hollowell, I think is here, if there are any questions, but this is just updating and amending the overtime comp time policy, HR policies on discipline and procedure, and social media policy. If there are no questions around the table, we will bring that back in two weeks for a vote. Next item, there's been a lot of interest, uh, in the media and other cities like Atlanta have had some of these pop up, but this is a private dog park, uh, that's contemplated in Columbus. This would amend Chapter Three on Alcoholic Beverages to create a new category for on-premises sales. Any questions around the table? I know, uh, City Manager's office and staff have been involved in this, it's gonna take another amendment, I think, and the Unified Development Ordinance also, uh, but this is the first step. Okay, we'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote. The, uh, last resolution item we have listed, Mayor, is a requested amendment to the variance previously granted by Resolution 409-18 for JNC Flat Rock Partners. This amended request comes with a condition that the developer, who has already placed a monument sign on the property, shall make a payment of $5,000 to the Columbus, Georgia Tree Replacement Fund. It's my understanding the developer's okay with that? Mr. Whitman's here?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, uh, we are fine with that.
All right, well, the revised resolution is around the table, it just needs a vote, Mayor.
All right, there's a motion, Mayor Protim, second from, uh, Counselor Crabbe, uh, Counselor Davis to the motion.
Yes, is this, was this a, um, request that was a while back that came to council? Was it a, a body shop or something in the loop over by the Snovis Bank? Back on the loop, they requested a, uh, a variance on a monument sign. This is not, this is something totally different?
Yeah, this is a Midland Tad property, JNC Flat Rock out on Highway 80, the overlay requirements that we're talking about here.
Okay, okay, I got you.
And we've got an agreement, the developer has agreed to make this payment into the fund and return for the amended variance, so it's ready for action.
Thank you.
All right, there is a motion, a second to approve, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, it's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman, for being here, that is passed. Mayor, all we would have left is a short executive session to ask for at the end of the meeting to discuss litigation.
Okay, Counselor Huff?
Uh, when we finish, Darrell Bailey is here from Liberty Utilities.
Okay, well, before we go into the, uh, public agenda, we'll, we'll call up, um, the individuals here for National Safe Digging Month. I think Ms. Bermudez is, is here, gives us an opportunity to meet her, she's not here? Okay. All right, well, somebody come on up and we'll see if we can read this into the record.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. Uh, thank you for recognizing us this month for National Safe Dig, Safe Digging Month. Sorry Ms. Bermudez will not be with us today, she had a little issue overnight, overrides in operations that needed her attention, and she sent me Darrell Bailey. And I'm also the chairman of the Muskogee County Utility Coordinating Committee.
Very good. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir, thank you for being here, and I appreciate all the assistance-
Thanks.
...in getting this together, and let Ms. Bermudez know that we ask about her, and that the mayor and the council look forward to meeting with her.
Thank you.
The proclamation this morning reads, "Whereas the Muskogee County Local Utility Coordinating Committee is partnering, partnering with Georgia 811 to promote National Safe Digging Month to coincide with the onset of the peak digging season. And whereas National Safe Digging Month was designed to heighten the awareness of contractors and homeowners of the 811 notification system. Whereas Georgia 811 is a nonprofit corporation dedicated to preventing damage to Georgia's underground utilities and promoting public safety. Whereas the communication system connects member utility companies with professional excavators and homeowner, homeowners who are planning excavation, tunneling, grading, boring, and demolition. And whereas the 811 notification system is paramount to the prevention of damage to the underground utilities and the safe, safety, Muskog, the safety of Muskogee County residents. Whereas the initiative wishes to encourage contractors and homeowners to contact Georgia 811, no matter how big or small their project may be, to include installation of fencing, decks, swing sets, or mailboxes. And whereas the mayor and city council of Columbus, Georgia encourage citizens to support the efforts of the Muskogee County Local Utility Coordinating Committee and Georgia 811." Now therefore, um, that, now therefore, uh, Skip Henderson, now therefore, 'cause I'm not, uh, therefore, V.H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, as National Safe Digging Month.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, do you have any comments?
Uh, thank you for all the support, and, uh, we are here to help any way that we can with any needs regarding excavation and so forth. Thank you so much.
I tell you, residents need to use that 811, I mean, whether you're planting a new flower bed or whatever it is, 'cause as opposed to making an easy call, you could, you could be in for a pretty interesting time repairing whatever you cut. Uh, let me, let me bring these to you, and you share with your group.
All right, we thank you for what you and your organization does, it really, I'm telling you, it really is a significant part of any minor building project you've got going on in your, in your, your yard. All right, next up is our, uh, public agenda, and I'll remind those that appear on public agenda that, um, you'll have five minutes, and I'll try to give you a signal when you have one minute remaining. Uh, you'll begin by giving your name and your, uh, address, and we won't start the timer until you start your remarks, and, uh, if you can't complete your, your, your communication in the five minutes allotted, we will afford you another three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. All right, so first up, Ms. Lashonda Daniel, representing All Family Matters Inc., regarding, uh, information on the organization. Is Ms. Daniel here? Okay. All right, the next individual scheduled is Ms. Jennifer Anthony, regarding black-owned, uh, business owners and the CARES Act. Welcome, Ms. Anthony, if you would begin, as I said, by stating your name and your address.
Good morning, I'm Jennifer Anthony, and the address is 3625 Manchester Expressway. Do I start?
Yes, ma'am, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and City Council. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you today to humbly ask for your assistance. It is our sincere hope, hope that you all are well and that your families and friends are also well during these difficult times. Since the beginning of the pandemic, small businesses in our community have suffered a tremendous loss. We have been working with small business owners in our community to include women-owned businesses, black-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, and non-black-owned businesses since 2008, and never have we seen it as bad as it is today. The conversations we've had with these small business owners have helped us to realize their tremendous loss. With all the money that has come into our city, very few small business owners have had access to it. However, now with the release of the CARES Act Fund, this will be a great opportunity for small businesses that are bleeding in our community. We can help stop the bleeding by providing them access to some of the money that is available. The CARES Act Fund can assist in closing the wound so that they will not have to close their doors. Small businesses represent at least 90% of the, the small business market, and tax base is dependent upon small businesses in all cities. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and City Council, we are here representing- Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and City Council, we are here representing those small business owners who need your assistance. They have called on us and asked for your help, our help with obtaining some of those funds. We have been blessed to be a vessel for small business owners for the metro Columbus area since 2008, and today we humbly ask for your help. We didn't come to waste your time. We came to be a voice for the small business community with the hope of receiving your help. So if we didn't use the full five minutes, please forgive us. We love our city, and we love the small business owners in our city. And it really breaks our heart to see the businesses who have been a part of our community for over 15 years, some a little less than that, to have to close their doors because of the pandemic. We can only imagine the small businesses who are not too far behind those who've had to close. In ending, if someone could please give us some sense of direction before we leave today as to who we should leave our contact information with so that we can follow up on our plea for help. And that is all we have, and thank you for allowing us to come and speak.
Ms. Anthony, appreciate you coming to advocate for a, a, an area of our community that we have been absolutely agonizing over. Every decision that we've seen made at the state and the federal level, everything we've been forced to do here to try to do what we can to protect the community, we have always kept in mind the financial impact. And just as my update this morning was, was focused on the medical piece, it was also, it was also closely connected with the financial piece. We know that small businesses are hurting, in fact, to the point when the CARES funding came through our state, we took sort of an unprecedented move. It wasn't required, others weren't doing it, but we hired an organization to help us vet applications from our small businesses to ask for financial assistance from the money that was coming into the city. Now, we had earmarked those funds, we committed those funds, and then those funds were removed from availability for us. So when we lost that money, there was no money to pass on to these individuals. And I will tell you, I'm sure that the city manager's going to make some comments as well. He and his staff are working, we talked yesterday, he, they are working diligently every day to try to come up with how we can impact our community. One of the areas that I've advocated for, he's in full agreement, is trying to do something with our small businesses, trying to make some type of grants, low interest or no interest loans, something to try to help small businesses in our community get, get over the hump. Now, the challenge we face right now is we've got a new game, but we don't have any rules to it yet. We're still, now, we've heard some, matter of fact, we, we attend these, these teleconferences and listen to everybody from National Association of Counties, ACCG, National League of Cities, Georgia Municipal Association, and they're all trying to give us an idea of a lay of the land, so to speak, but we don't have the rules. Treasury is due to release those rules now. I will tell you that we are not waiting on them in the sense that we are already lining up potential uses for the funding, should they, should those uses fall within the parameters that the, that the Treasury gives us. So we're, we are kind of in a bind ourselves. We're putting together a budget, and we really don't have a full, clear understanding of what our resources are. We're, we're very, very hopeful, and, and again, we are trying to get things put in place, so we, we are going to do whatever the Treasury will allow us to do to try to make our entire community whole. City Manager, do you have anything to add, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and you're exactly on point with your explanation, and I know that you said from day one, when we thought we were going to get 30-plus million dollars in the initial CARES Act, you said then that you wanted to do something for small business, and that's why we set out with a process to solicit applications from small business, and we received those applications. And we were set to fund some $6 million to small businesses when those dollars disappeared. They just, we didn't get that money. It just didn't come. And it was redirected from the state to, for unemployment insurance. And so, and, and now we see that we are going to get the American Recovery Plan funding, stimulus money, and you've continued to say that we need to do something for small business, and, and, but we don't have that direct, those directions, as you've indicated, from Treasury. When I saw that Ms. Anthony was on the agenda representing Columbus black business owners, referencing the CARES Act funding, I asked Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge to, to put together three or four slide presentations so that we could communicate where we think we are, because we, we're in a place that we just don't have information at this point. But what I, I will say, as she is coming forward now to, to do this PowerPoint, Ms. Anthony, and to all of those represented with you today, what I will do is, is have Tiaja Johnson get your contact information, and I will, Mayor, schedule a meeting with, to, with us, with the mayor and city manager and appropriate staff, that we can either through Zoom or in an, in person, face-to-face, or we can socially distance, meet with you to, as we get more information, to make sure that we are very clear and you're very clear on what's available and what's not available. I believe we, we owe that to you.
Thank you.
And so, so Tiaja Johnson will get your contact information before you leave, and, and the mayor and city manager and appropriate staff will follow up with you to at least meet with you face-to-face or via Zoom and have further discussion.
Thank you.
Sure. And so Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to share in a PowerPoint what we know and where we think we are, what's available right, what we're working on, trying to make happen. So she'll take the, the micro, the podium.
Okay.
And, and then know that we will be following up with each of you to have further discussion. We believe by your coming here today, we owe you that much.
I think Counsel Huff had a quick question. Counsel?
Yes, Ms. Anthony, you all stay right there. I don't, I don't want to interrupt the flow of things now. When, when she finishes, I would like for you to get the people with you to at least come up and introduce themselves and who they represent this morning, once Ms. Director, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge finishes. Thank you.
So, good morning. I'd put this present to get, presentation together yesterday just to give you an overview of some of the funding sources and how the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan is, is working. The CARES Act was from March of 2020. That was the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, the CARES Act. It was over $2 trillion. Phase one was over $10 million that we did receive. Those funds were spent internally on teleworking laptops, public safety payroll for those frontline EMS and police response, as well as the PPEs and facility modifications for the city of Columbus. Phase two and three, which as has been stated, we did not receive, was another $24 million. Those funds were kept by the state to replenish the Unemployment Fund. But there is also some funding that is available through the original CARES Act, through CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant Program. There's CV and CV III funding, and this was done for $981,000 in the CV allocation. We have partnered with the Chamber and Startup Columbus to implement a small business relief grant program for $112,000. That has not been launched yet. We will be coming back at the next council meeting to give you the details of that program and how it will work and the application process. So that is almost ready to be made public and application processes to start. We also received $1.1 million in what's called CV III allocation. This is out of the original CARES Act. That competitive application process for the programs that will be funded will be April 19th through the 30th. So you can go to the city's website, and for those nonprofit and organizations that want to implement programs utilizing this CV funding, that application process will begin. We are hopeful that we'll be able to add additional funding to this Chamber and Startup Columbus program for those small business loans. So there is further opportunities for those loan programs going forward. The American Rescue Plan, which the mayor and the city manager have talked about briefly, that was placed into law March 11th of 2021. That is $1.9 trillion worth of economic relief. Cities, counties, and states are grand, are expected to receive direct aid. Before, through the CARES Act, it came through the state. We will be getting direct funding from the Treasury, but again, no formal guidance has been released yet, so we are waiting for that. It does say that within 60 days of it going into law that we would receive our first allocation, so that will be May 10th. So we expect to receive guidance very soon, and hopeful that those funds will be released. And again, we are working towards putting a program together for council's consideration. These are the four things that are outlined as the uses of funds for state and local governments to include responding to the public health emergency, essential workers, revenue replacement, which was not allowed in the first CARES Act, as well as investment in infrastructure to include water, sewer, and broadband. So those are our kind of high-level uses of funds that we expect from the ARP funding. I will also note, as part of the ARP funding, there are a multitude of aspects of that act that are not coming to state and local governments but are available. So I would also look in this particular group to the Small Business Administration. They are receiving funding in addition to what's coming to the city of Columbus that would be available for small businesses. So we're working through, this is a very large act, there's a lot of components to that, so we are working through that to see if, and you'll hear on the city manager's agenda today, another opportunity that the city has in addition to the direct aid that we can participate in. So again, I would suggest that anyone look at all the components of that particular act and see if there's anything else that applies directly to your organization. So I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that.
And so, again, to Ms. Anthony and to all of those with her today, I, I know that this brief PowerPoint presentation does not answer your question or, and, and so that we don't have to try and get all of the questions done today. I think it would be better if we schedule a time that we can sit, and then we can hear from each of you, your challenges and what kind of support you're looking for, and, and then we can determine if that fits into what's coming through the American Rescue Plan funding, or if there's funding that remains, as the Deputy City Manager indicated, through, if we have money through the Community Development Block Grant or other sources that might be able to assist or funding would be available for, to meet the needs that you are expressing to us, and we'll learn about those when we meet with you. So, and so I think, Mayor, if, if we could do that, two of us could meet with them and, and have further conversation, discussion.
Yes, sir. Very good. Thank you. Counsel Tucker?
Thank you for the presentation. Mr. City Manager, on last Thursday, I met with about 30 small business owners, and I would like to add those individuals to the meeting.
Absolutely. And so, you know, what we'll, I'll try and do, if we can get that, that contact information, we'll try and do a venue that's large enough that we can spread out, and, and so we'll have all of the appropriate people there, and of course, council members, whoever want to be present, that we can at least have some direct dialogue with the small business community and, and with black business owners.
Oh. Yes, ma'am.
I also met with the new CEO, Gerald Mitchell, and I was very pleased to hear him say that he is 100% invested in small business owners. He has a, a great perspective about giving aid, so seeing this information in the presentation is, is very needed. So, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions around the table, Mr. Mayor? I know that Counsel Huff wanted some introductions.
Counsel, Counsel Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. I just wanted to communicate, I know a lot of the business owners, I'm a small business owner myself, but I know that the first round of stimulus that went out, there was a lot of assistance to, to business owners, but there were requirements, you know, guidelines, you had to fill out a lot of paperwork and so forth in order to get that funding. That's now the deadline on that. There's a, I, I think it's important from a business perspective to understand, first, you got to understand where the sources of funds and where they're at, and realize the city is kind of limited in what they can actually do. These funds are usually sent out through other agencies, like they've talked about. The second go-around of funding was a, a different matter, what the mayor was referring to, but then again, like the city manager and like it was stated, there's regulations, there's guidelines, there's procedures and all you have to follow, and that's not really part of the local municipality. That actually, that, that responsibility is put on to the, the business owner, and what they have to do is just a matter of us getting the knowledge out and the understanding to people and sending them in the right direction. I don't know many, honestly, Mr. City Manager, I don't know many other cities that are actually hands-on, like we're doing here in our community, in helping to guide people in the right direction. A lot of that comes from the assistance of their own professionals, whether it's their legal counsel, or their accountants, or their management companies, people like that, the, the, the chamber business organizations, the Small Business Association and others out there. I mean, the ones that are actually involved in this, that should be given that information. It's out on the internet, you just got to, sometimes it's hard to dig up, but I think what would be helpful to, to all these business owners, all the business owners in Columbus, what you're talking about, if it could be on a document, on a piece of paper, that at least they can have it, they can take it home, because it's so easy to forget all this stuff. Even if you have a presentation, it's so easy to forget all this stuff, because you're just, as a business owner, you're so overwhelmed with the day-to-day activities, it's just hard to, on top of the, the burden of just keeping the doors open, it's just hard to, to make it all work, and, you know, you can get really, if you're a, a real, a, a small business owner, you can get exhausted real easy and just not knowing where to go, and I sense that, but if we can get that out there, or even on our website, where people can go and find an easy access of where they need to go or who they need to contact, but it's real important, all this stimulus is coming down, every bit of it is, it's got different guidelines and it serves different purposes, so, and like it was said, this, this last round, I don't think anybody understands exactly what it can and can be used for at, at this point, but that all comes from Washington, from the Treasury, and, you know, and the city doesn't really, we just have to follow the guidelines. A lot of times, I don't think that, you know, technically, we're, we're not the initiator of being able to provide or give out the funds unless it's an agency, like the Deputy City Manager said, over with community reinvestment, there is a portion, but like the city manager said, if we've got a program that we're allowed to start, then certainly you need to know about that, and certainly you need to, you know, to just pass, get the word out there to all the business owners, because there's, there's a lot that just, it's just so overwhelming, they don't know. They don't know, and they're not getting the help. Some of the more, you know, ones that have access to professional Some of the more, you know, ones that have access to professional services and all and information, they seem to be a little quicker to capture some of this, but a lot of people still get left behind, and hopefully, we can, you know, we can do the best we can to address that. So I thank, Mr. City Manager, any kind of documentation that we can give on paper, whatever, and get in the hands of people versus just a presentation is going to be so valuable. So at least they know where to go and who to talk with along this journey, because it's just, it's just overwhelming, it really is.
You know, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, if I may, when we have this meeting, what I'll try and do to follow up on your point, that a lot of this funding that might be available, capital operating assistance, is outside of the government. And I was talking to CPA the other day, and I'll probably invite a CPA to talk about it, but he was talking about the fact that people don't know what's available to them as a result of the pandemic, and they don't have because they don't know or did not know that it's available. And I was looking at an email and it says it's, that was sent to me, it says, "A hundred percent of my firm's clients received one hundred percent of what they applied for, in some cases, much more." He said, "A hundred percent of his clients receive exactly what they applied for, and in most cases, much more." And he was making the point that a lot of people just don't know what's available to them, and so I'm going to see if I can get that person to talk to, in the session the mayor and city manager and staff will do with this group and any others, about what was or still is available and what you ought to be going after, which would be outside of the boundaries of the city government. But we're going to talk about what we can do, but I want them to hear about what they can do that they may or may not know about, and how to go about getting it done. So that is what I would want to be a part of this session.
And, Mr. City Manager, maybe a good idea to bring the Chamber in, and since they're the advocates for the business community, and let them, they have a pretty good, clear understanding of what's available for the individual businesses, and then let them kind of do, maybe do a town hall-type meeting virtually, where we invite the businesses to it and let them hear what is outside the government's purview, but something that they need to be able to explore on their own.
Yeah.
Counselor Tucker?
I wanted to say to Counselor Davis, in Macon, they have a Small Business Affairs Department within the city government, and I know Mayor Lester Miller, and I want to commend you, Mayor Henderson, for those six million dollars for small businesses for the Cares Act last year. However, they do have that in other, in other cities and counties, and it's beneficial because you're not paying three hundred and fifty thousand. I know, you know, it's probably like two or three people that work within that department, but they actually handle those issues that you just, you know, made us aware of, and also with the city manager in reference to people not knowing, you know, exactly what's offered. And it's a real, it's a real good department, so it's just something to think about, especially with how we keep having these funds, you know, come available.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and if we could, I mean, I think Counsel Hough had a very good suggestion that maybe we allow the individuals that are here to come up and say who they are and what their business is, or...
My name is Erica Thomas. I represent Believe Accessories. Thank you for allowing us to speak, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to have a meeting in the future about small businesses.
My name is Michelle Howard. Michelle Howard Photography, and yes, it is kind of hard to navigate sometimes. I have downloaded six hundred pages of the Cares Act, and it can get confusing, but I'm here to look through it and find out what I need, but we are prayerfully asking the city to help us also in this process. Thank you so much and have a great day.
I'm Anasia Evans, and I'm representing Ivan Evans with Visionary Capital LLC. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anthony Mallory. I'm representing, I'm in the cuts and styles. Just want to thank you for your support.
Good morning. My name is Trinor Warner, and I'm representing Marshall Warner Group LLC. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Walker, and I am an independent business and HR consultant.
My name is Lucretia Stevens, and I represent Happy Valley Adult Day Facility, and we definitely appreciate any assistance that you guys can give us during this time. Thank you.
My name is Regina Peoples, and I'm representing Power of Faith, CFC. Thank you.
Lastly, I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here today, and we are here humbly. We're not here to criticize or say that the city has not or will not do what needs to be done in our city. We're pretty confident in our city, and we're pretty confident that because we came here, we know that everything is going to be done in the way in which it benefits our city, because this is our city and we love our city. And I'm Jennifer Anthony, as you all know, and I represent the Columbus Minority Pages. We print annually, and we do have a way to reach the majority of the community. We not only have publications that reach the small business market, but the entire Columbus as well. We have the Columbus Georgia Magazine as well. And again, we are grateful, we are humble, and we are thankful, and we have done some research, and we are aware of some of the things that the city may not be aware of in regards to the Cares Act, and we really look forward to having a one-on-one and talking and discussing those things and seeing if we can't help the workforce development opportunities here in our city. So thank you all so much for all that you do, and again, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank all of you. All right, Mr. City Manager, I believe we are on your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I've got the Chattahoochee River Conservancy Trash Trap Agreement, and asking your approval to enter into a letter of agreement with Chattahoochee River Conservancy.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, it passes. If you would finish what you're saying, because this is a significant...
Yes, but it's Conservancy Letter of Agreement, and they will actually install and maintain and operate trash collection devices on tributaries of the Chattahoochee River, and they will incur all costs associated with the purchase installation and clean-out maintenance of trash traps, and that is a very important project, and we appreciate the partnership with them. Items two, three, and four have to do with a declaration of taking of property, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Hodge to come and address these three, and after she will have addressed them, I will ask for your approval to move forward. We come to you from time to time when we're trying to do road projects, and we ask that you allow us to declare a taking of property, and we pay the money into the court, and we do that so that we can move forward with the project and won't delay that project for years and years as it makes its way through the court. And so Deputy City Manager Hodge, I wanted her to mention these three projects. They're not total takings, but I wanted it to be clear as to what we're talking about here before we ask you for your vote. Deputy City Manager Hodge?
Good morning. This has to do with the Spiderweb Project. We are finishing up all of the right-of-way acquisitions. These are the last three that we have been working with property owners on this particular project, but these are required to purchase only needed property for transportation projects. It's only small portions, either permanent easements, temporary easements, driveway easement, right-of-way, just those slivers of property that is needed to complete those projects. It's consistent with other projects that we have brought forward on other transportation projects. An appraisal is always completed for all required property in this process. This particular one, the businesses will remain in operation at their current location during construction. They will always have access during construction and then provided access after construction. When negotiations cannot be reached with the owners, we move forward with the declaration of taking in order to keep that project moving forward. That appraised amount is put into the court so that the project can move forward. There are three parcels, and you'll see on this slide, the amount of the appraisals that were done for these portions of those parcels. Point zero-two-three acres for right-of-way, point one-zero-six acres for permanent easement at six-fifty Andrews Road, point zero-zero-seven and point zero-three-eight acres is a permanent easement, and then point zero-six-seven is a temporary driveway easement, and then on the final parcel, thirty-one-hundred Buena Vista Road, point zero-one-five acres for right-of-way, point zero-seven-three acres as a permanent easement, and then two sections for temporary easements.
And so Deputy City Manager Hodge, back to that slide, is that the amount that we will pay into the courts?
Yes, sir. This is the amount that will be paid into the court.
So the, they, so one part, one property is eleven thousand nine hundred dollars, a second property, two hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, and the third property, five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars, will be paid into the courts?
Yes, that is correct.
For those, the right-of-way for use of permanent easement and temporary easement, that property will get five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. All right.
All right. Counselor House? Thank you, Mayor. Is this money covered by the T-SLOSS, part of that big project, or something else?
Yes, it's part of the right-of-way acquisition budget for that project out of T-SLOSS.
Okay. Thank you.
And so you can move forward.
So this is six-twenty-four Andrews Road. This is a body shop. The total acreage of this parcel is one point four-one-three acres, and again, the declaration is for point zero-two-three and point zero-one-six, and these are permanent easements or a small portion for right-of-way. And I will show on this particular map, you can see Normandy Road and Southland Street. These are not city roads. These actually belong to the cold storage facility, so we have negotiated with them a right-of-way easement on those particulars to allow us to use those streets during the project, but these are not city streets that are surrounding these two. Andrews Road is on the, just to the north of this particular slide. The second parcel is six-fifty Andrews Road, and this is the Exhaust Pro that's located. This is a total of point seven-one-two acres, and again, where the declaration is for point zero-zero-seven, point zero-three-eight, and point zero-six-seven for easements on this particular property. And then the third is thirty-one-hundred Buena Vista Road. This is the KFC. This is a total acreage of one point four-three-five, and there is a right-of-way, a permanent easement, and temporary easements required. They will continue to have access during construction and after construction off of Buena Vista Road. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but again, these are not total takes, these are just easements, temporary and permanent easements and right-of-way for this project.
And so Mayor and Council, when we are unable to come to an amenable settlement with property owners, is when we go through the declaration of taking and pay the money into the court. Again, these are not total takings of those businesses. They will continue to be able to operate those businesses during and after construction, and they'll be paid fair market value for the taken, and that money is paid into the court until we're able to resolve the matter, but we will move forward without delay to put in the bridge over the railroad crossings at Buena Vista Road, Martin Luther King. We've talked about it for many years, and we're down to finalizing the last parcels of property that we need to make this, move this project forward. We're asking for your approval today to pay this money into the court so that we can proceed with the project. That's two, three, and four on the agenda.
There's a motion approved, and the second from Counsel Tucker. Counsel Hough?
Yes, news and music to my ears. So, Mr. City Manager, if you would, just repeat that one more time for the public, that the businesses there from KFC, Exhaust Pro and all will get to stay, we're just taking some of the property for the project.
Yes, would you go back to that slide that we're, where we're paying into the court? But the KFC, Exhaust Pro, and the warehouse will get to stay. They will be able to remain open for business, doing their normal business during and after the construction, and what you see on the screen for right-of-way that we would be taking, or the permanent easement, or the temporary easement, you can see what they'll be, what will be paid into the courts until we can resolve the matter. Sometimes when we negotiate, obviously, people don't agree, they think they deserve more, you know, and then some want you to buy their whole property when we don't need the whole property, and so you can imagine that we go through things like that as we negotiate. But those businesses will remain intact in where they are, and they will be able to continue to do business during construction and after construction, when the bridge over the railroad crossing has been completed, and then we can all move on, and we'll resolve the matter with the money in reserve in the courts. And so that's kind of where we are.
Thank you so very much. We've been going over back and forth, I guess, for about eight or nine years discussing, and I think seriously for about the last three or four, just to get to this point. So thank you both, Mr. City Manager and Deputy City Manager Hodge, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, I know you have a lot of, I guess, experience with some of these road projects and the negotiating process, a lot of them have been done in the past in the district I represent. I just wanted to share this for the knowledge of the council and for the record, and if I'm accurate, is this a correct statement, I'm accurate in what I'm saying? I have always, when we've encountered these type of situations, and usually, it doesn't get to this point, but the city has always been fair, above and beyond, they have always paid higher than the market, and they have gone to the extreme to try to make property owners happy, but like you said, there's always somebody that wants a little more, a little more, a little more, and they'll hold out.
Yes.
And sometimes you just have to say, can't do it, you know, we'll see you in court.
That's right.
And you have to let the, a judge or mediator solve the problem, but I do want council to know that the city has always gone above and beyond, from my experience, in paying property owners a very, very fair compensation for property that's needed on these projects or road projects or things that benefit the community as a whole, and usually, it's traffic and road improvements.
Absolutely.
Is that a correct statement, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. That appears to be all the questions.
All right. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Deputy City Manager Hodge. Number five?
Well, we've got to vote on that. We've got a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem and a second from Counselor Tucker. No further discussion. So all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, no. They are approved. Thank you, sir.
I didn't catch what you approved.
Oh, we approved two, three, and four.
I'm sorry. I thought you did the rest of the agenda. Okay.
I'm sorry. We're just trying to get caught up with you. You're moving a little quick.
Thank you. Next, I have a lease agreement, 1611th Street, Barcelona LLC. They want to use the alleyway there to do outside activities. And, you know, that's, it's a five-year agreement. It'll be used for outdoor dining and social activities connected with the Salt Cellar Restaurant. You know, the little alleyway out back? And we would do five hundred dollars a year for rent. The utilities, all maintenance, upkeep, and repairs will be paid by the leasing, and that is right behind the Salt Cellar Restaurant. We don't do anything with that little piece of property. And so it would be put to good use, and we're asking your approval.
Motion approved from Counselor Davis. Heard a second from Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. It's approved.
Got a street acceptance for a long branch court.
Heard a motion accept from Counselor Davis, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. It's approved.
I've got FY21 Local Government Improvement Grant, known as L-MIG Safety Action Plan. The FY21 L-MIG allocation for Columbus, Muskogee.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no.
And next, number eight is another opportunity.
All right. We've got a motion from Counselor Huff for items eight, nine, and 10. I heard a second from Counselor Garrett. So we will go through these, but are there any questions for any of these or anyone they want pulled? Hearing none, all in favor of eight, nine, and 10, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, good. Mr. City Manager, if you would, read through those. Let us, let the public know what we voted on.
Sure. I've got, number eight was a Columbus Civic Center Shuttered Vineyard Operators Grant. It's for one million dollars. And it's to provide economic relief for expenses and revenues forfeited because of event cancellations due to COVID-19. And the additional funding from the grant can be used for payroll costs, rent payments, utility payments, worker protection expenditures, and a number of other things. But it's approximately a million dollars or is otherwise awarded. And the Civic Center is pursuing this by applying to the Small Business Association Office of Disaster Assistance for this shuttered vineyard operators' grant. And we are hopeful that we can receive that million dollars. It's another opportunity. Number nine is a donation request for permanent sand at Riverwalk's Hummus at Brick Memorial. It's an anonymous donor. It's twenty-five hundred dollars. Number 10 was a Georgia Trauma Commission, Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission Grant. It's seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents. It will, the funds will be used to purchase equipment that will be used for Columbus Fire and EMS in the treatment of trauma patients, but it's seventy-eight hundred dollars. And then I've got purchases, Mayor and Counsel. I've got roofing services. A hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for Haygood Recreation Center. I'm asking your approval.
Motion to approve the purchases A through E by Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Is there any item that a counsel would like pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the purchases, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, they're approved. Walk through them, please, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, that was the roofing services. A, B is refuse truck advertisement, and this is the opportunity to either wrap or place advertisement on one of our garbage trucks. And we'll see how that goes if someone's interested in advertising on a garbage truck or wrapping the garbage truck, much like what you see with the metro bus.
Fifty-five thousand households a day.
And then we've got a carpet annual contract. And then we've got surplus equipment decommissioning our mainframe and peripheral equipment. And then we've got Tahos for the police department. Those are the purchases. And, Mr. Mayor, with that, I've got a few updates. We've got the Tax Commissioner here, and I'm going to call her first. And then we'll hear from Trees Columbus. And then we'll have a brief update from the Public Works Director on Waste Collection, and then the Civic Center, and then the Trade Center updates. And so I am going to call on the Tax Commissioner if she's here. I think she's coming forward now. She's coming forward. And while she is coming forward again, we'll hear from Trees Columbus, Dorothy McDaniel following the Tax Commissioner, and then Michael Criddle will give an update on waste collection. Pickup, it's yard waste primarily. We are, I believe, three days behind on collection of yard waste. And then we just want you to know what's going on at the Civic Center and then at the Trade Center with Rob Landers and Haley Tillery. And so that's who you will be hearing from. And now we will hear from the Tax Commissioner, Commissioner Lou Huff.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you an update on the motor vehicle kiosks that I had spoken to you a month or two ago and let you know what the status of that is. We have had long lines, as you know of, because of COVID and additional responsibilities that have been passed down to us by the state. And so it looks like we are very, 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 very close to having motor vehicle kiosks located here in Columbus. It looks really, really good. I would like to say a hundred percent, but I'm of the philosophy that it's not over till the fat lady sings, okay? So she's tuning up for it. We're looking at possibly early August. We would have two kiosks located here. We qualify for two. This is the result of a contract between the state and International Technologies Incorporated. They own the equipment and the software for it. It's designed specifically for the state of Georgia. It will handle renewals of motor vehicle registrations, and it will handle the lapse fees for insurance that takes place. We estimate that this could possibly remove about sixty-four customers out of our lines, which is tremendous. We anticipate that it's, they're going to be located in ideal situations. They determine the situations where they are located at. It is based on foot traffic primarily, demographics. And so we'll probably see one located in each of the primary areas of Muskogee County or Columbus. The locations as far as where the specific addresses, I don't have for you at this time. I'd like to wait on the institution that's going to give us the okay to place them. The problem with that is that up until this point, we were unable to have these kiosks in Columbus, even though it went into effect in 2015 in the state of Georgia. And it was because the contracts were all with Kroger Stores. We will be going with Publix is going to be the store that will work with us. Prior to that time, we were unable to get Publix on board and agree with it. But they now have locations that service the citizens of Florida with motor vehicle kiosks in their locations. So the negotiations is taking place with ITI and Publix as we speak. We're just waiting for the ink to dry. And tentatively, it will be Chatham County, Savannah, Dublin, which is Lowndes County, and Muskogee County will be the three counties that will be going on board for the first time with locations in the state of Georgia in a Publix location. So we are really, really excited about that. That will drive some of the traffic away from the location of our office on Macon Road. It will also give accessibility to motor vehicle registration on Saturdays and Sundays and after hours as long as Publix is open. They will have availability for that. Another good thing for the government itself is that it doesn't cost us anything. We do not pay for the equipment nor the maintenance agreement because it is owned by ITI. So we have limited involvement as to the decisions of where they are placed at because we don't own those pieces of equipment. But we don't have the maintenance costs that goes along with them for that particular purposes. So those are good things. So you say, how do they recoup their cost of investment in these kiosk machines? And that's through a service fee that is charged of three dollars per 10 transactions that happen. So it is passed on to the user. It will handle credit cards and debit cards. It will not handle cash. And with that, that's my latest update on it. And the next one, oh, they will handle marketing. They handle the complete marketing of this from start to finish. So we don't have to do anything with that. So we're really excited about that. And I hope that you will be and the citizens of Muskogee County will be. In addition to that, we have an opportunity to reach out, and they have already signed up. I think it's six or seven counties that are adjacent to us that can also utilize this kiosk. Now, the one thing that we have to do, and we don't see a problem with it, is that we have to guarantee them 600 transactions per kiosk, which is 1,200 transactions in these renewals that take place. If they pull at least 20% away from us, not including what these additional counties can handle for us, we will easily make 1,200 transactions without a cost impending upon us. Are there any questions that you'd like to ask me at this time?
Yes. Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Huff, this, this is in addition to the things that are currently available to get your tag renewed. For example, the, I mail mine in every, and I can still do that once we get this. Is that correct?
Absolutely. You can still use the internet. You can mail it in. We would hope that you would not want to come down and visit us if you have a renewal, if you have a title.
Oh, I love coming to visit you.
Unfortunately, for all the other citizens that are standing behind you, we would love to have you visit with us too, but it does string out that line into the parking garage and elsewhere. And we do have a number of citizens that just want to come down and visit us for the day.
Well, I think this is one of those things that is new to our experience. And if I go to Publix at eight o'clock on Friday night, I can renew my driver, my tag. So thank you for pulling all of this together. Appreciate it.
Well, we're, we are very, very excited about it. So hopefully, the first part of August, we'll be able to open this up to the public, and it will make things easier for them. Any other questions?
Madam Tax Commissioner, it doesn't appear so. It's a great program. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. Have a wonderful, blessed day.
Thank you. Next, Mayor and Counsel, we will have Dorothy McDaniel with Trees Columbus on park planning project. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me back. It's been about a year, but I'm still Dorothy McDaniel with Trees Columbus. And I am here to update you on the canopy restoration project that has been ongoing for a while to let you know where this project and this partnership is heading next. So as y'all may remember, the canopy restoration project started five years ago as a cooperative effort between Trees Columbus and the Columbus Consolidated Government Public Services. Trees Columbus received a grant to develop a mechanism for renewing our declining tree canopy that we see across the county, across Muskogee County. The pilot for this project took place in the neighborhood rights of ways surrounding Lake Bottom Park and then in the tree canopy in the park itself. We designed this project from the beginning as a, as a repeatable process, as something that could be taken to different parts of Muskogee County. And so this is where we're headed next. The CRP demonstrated how Trees Columbus and how the Columbus Consolidated Government can work together in the process of tree management, specifically with our public trees, especially when we're seeing these levels of decline in our tree canopy. So after the CRP launched, we actually had private donors, private investors, come to us who wanted to see this process move forward, but see it more specifically in our parks. So what we've been working on over the past year with Parks and Recreation and with the help of Holly Browder, we have learned that there are many, many factors to be considered when you talk about our parks, park trees, park development. So we know that healthy urban trees are absolutely interdependent with human activity in the parks, regardless of the kind of parks. There, there's still that interdependence between people and trees, whether you're at a Peach Little League game and you see the families hanging out under the trees. But those trees need to be safe. So we know that. But we also know that we can't restore tree canopy by simply going out and planting trees. It's, it's a lot more complicated than that. So the next phase of this project is going to be developing a unified approach to canopy preservation and park planning so that we can ensure that all of the pieces of the infrastructure are sustainable, and they're working together, the natural pieces, the people pieces, the constructed pieces. So the next phase of this project is going to take place in Lake Bottom Park. We're going to continue that and kind of see that through to implementation, and in Theo McGee Park, a smaller park, a different kind of park, a park that has more active recreation space and fewer trees. But both of these parks already have active stakeholder groups. And that is, is huge, and that is one of the major factors that goes into consideration when we're talking about our parks. Public outreach, stakeholder input, consensus building, it's going to be a huge part of this project. And it's going to be the basis for the recommendations that emerge from the project. So Trees Columbus's mission, our mission is to plant, preserve, and protect trees. It's not actually park planning. Therefore, in order to get the expertise that we need to get the, the people who do that park planning, private citizens used the Canopy Restoration Project and Trees Columbus to, they used it as a vehicle, basically, to invest in the parks. So they provided funding for us, for Trees Columbus, to hire a park planning consultant, a consultant that deals specifically with this type of planning and plan development that's based on stakeholder involvement, it's based on consensus building, and taking in all of these factors. So that's fabulous news. So that's fabulous news. That's going to be kicking off later this month. We're very excited about this continued partnership, not just with the Columbus Consolidated Government and with Parks and Recreation, but with all of these community partners that we're working with. The Chamber has been involved and hugely helpful. We appreciate the Chamber and Gerald for his knowledge in hiring these consultants. Midtown, Peach Little League, the Park District, Dragonfly Trails, A.J. McClung Williams, CA, Columbus Water Works, Keep Columbus Beautiful. I mean, we know how much Columbus loves its parks, and so it's going to be vital to get the stakeholder input that we need, do the consensus building. We're very excited about this, and the partnership can address not just tree canopy, but other potential possible park improvements as well. As I said earlier, we know that tree canopy restoration is not just about going out and planting a bunch of trees. We've got to consider all the different factors. Where do trees need to go? Where do other things need to go to ensure that we've got healthy, sustainable, functioning parks? Because Columbus is poised to be known as a community that's known for its green spaces and its infrastructure, we're marketing assets like our river and our whitewater to retain talent and to attract new talent. However, in order for that vision to really become a reality, it is going to take the kind of public-private partnership that Trees Columbus has been working on for five years. And we really appreciate those partners, and we're looking forward to moving forward with them. Again, we're going to be kicking off this partnership and this project with the consultants at the end of this month. We should be started by May. We'll keep everyone updated. We'll keep you involved. So I just want to thank Holly and all the folks with the city who've been working with us and have been, you know, enthusiastic all along, and we are looking forward to getting started. I am happy to answer any questions y'all have. I do have a little bit of a hearing impairment, so I might have to ask folks to repeat their questions, but please let me know if y'all would like to know anything else.
Dorothy, I think you did a pretty good job. I don't see any questions. I will just say, you know, what Trees Columbus does in partnering with our folks in the Arbor Department of Public Works and engaging the public is, it's essential. Y'all do a great, great job of helping us kind of be mindful of the significance of preserving and protecting and replacing that canopy. Counselor Davis?
And it's great to hear the presentation, and so glad, Dorothy, that you would come and spend time with us. I did want to say about the planning aspect that, you know, one of our main corridors that we're trying desperately to get it upgraded, improved, and, you know, just a lot of people are working on it, Trees Columbus, the Mill District, and our city. I think we've got a lot of people that have been involved in planting trees. And when you go along Second Avenue, you'll see a lot of trees that have been planted and they're there now, and one day, they're going to be really nice. And hopefully, we continue to get that whole corridor up to date. This would, you know, trees take a little bit longer than hardscape and that kind of stuff, so it's there, it's growing. We really appreciate that. That's some of the good work that takes place by the collaboration and the partnerships. And I've always said that that's how you get things done in Columbus, you know, going out on your own and individual or an organization. You don't get a lot accomplished, but the collaborative partnerships like Second Avenue, and that's one thing I've always appreciated of Trees Columbus, is the willingness to get involved with others and bring everybody to the table. And just thank you for all the good work you've done over the years. We're very fortunate to have an organization like Trees Columbus in Columbus preserving, protecting, and planting trees.
Thank you. And you know, the city has always been such a good partner with Trees Columbus for the past 20 years. Me and Counselor Davis has even, you've even driven a backhoe to help Trees Columbus out before. Y'all didn't hear that from me.
All right. It doesn't appear to be any more questions. Dorothy?
Ms. McDaniel, thank you for coming, and thank you for the partnership. Next, Mayor and Counsel, we've got Director of Public Works, Michael Criddle, with an update on waste pickup.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Counselors, thank you for having me here today. Unfortunately, I don't have great news to tell you. That's often the case. One of these days, I will come here and have fantastic news. Today's not that day. I've heard from a lot of you over the past few weeks, several weeks, few months, some of you during this meeting, about yard waste and limbs and things on the ground. Unfortunately, that's been a fact of life for us, and it's not a lack of effort, it's not a lack of will, it's not a lack of determination, and I see that on every face in Public Works. They're working six days a week. Wednesdays and Saturdays now have become a routine workday, and unfortunately, that's going to be the way it is for quite a while. I did get a call, and I want to start off with this, a couple of weeks ago, from Counselor in this room, Counselor Tucker, concerning a gentleman that we have working for us. His name is Rodriguez Horsley. Mr. Horsley did something. I'm going to let Counselor Tucker chime in here. Don't get these calls often, but I sure am glad when I do get them. Counselor?
Thank you. It was on Nina Street. I actually deliver food. I'm a part of a senior hunger coalition with the area of aging, aging agency, River Valley Regional Commission. And one day, when I was delivering food, it was a lot of, I guess, like household goods, you know, that was out on the lawn. I mean, the whole thing was covered now from two houses, the length. And this individual stopped and got all of the items off, but they were actually just putting that stuff on the street. And what the individual that lived in the neighborhood, the senior citizen mentioned, she said, "That never happens in our neighborhood." And I said, "They didn't know that it was me that was out there," because I'm, you know, baseball captain, just handing out food. But she was so thankful for them, Mr. Rodriguez, you said Rodriguez? Yeah. She was very thankful for him picking up the trash in that area. And that, we always hear, like you just came up, say you had nothing to say good, but you really did have something to say good, because citizens do notice when we do good. And some do call. However, at this particular time, I was able to witness it with my own eyes, and I was very thankful that that individual did that for that community. Because, you know, that's always what we hear, is we don't get this in our community, but they do it on the north side. But on that day, he really represented Columbus Consolidated Government well, so thank you. And I don't know if we could do a resolution for him or give him a cake or what, but he made that lady's day. So thank you so much. And I think he's a new hire, right?
Yes, ma'am. He's been with us about six months. He exemplifies what we strive to be in Public Works, and I think that's the way with the future for folks in there. And I do say, and I reiterate, that it's not a lack of efforts that's creating this problem. I want to go over what the problem is. Be it good or bad, the Public Works Department has been established or been set up on an inmate labor regimen. We're completely dependent on inmate labor for everything, cutting grass, picking up debris, trash, every bit of waste collection we do. And a full crew in Public Works is 353 inmates. That gets everybody, all of our correctional officers, eight inmates per crew, out cutting right of ways, doing all the tree maintenance, you know, everything, everything we do is driven by inmate labor. So 353 is the full crew number. That's a good number. Currently, yesterday, we had 138. That's 39%. We've got 39% of our workforce. I think what they're doing right now is beyond remarkable. What we've done is diverted everything to household garbage, everything. Everything, I mean, everything else has stopped. Everything's going to household garbage collection now, first, recycling, second, yard waste, a distant third. That horse is way back there in the pack, and everything else is just, has virtually stopped. I've got correctional officers that have nobody on their crew that are cutting grass by themselves on the right of way, because they don't have anybody else to take with them. And that's the reality of the situation. And it's not anything that MCP has done to us or anything else. There are just no inmates there. This goes all the way to the recycling center. Our recycling center is operating, is supposed to operate on 38 inmates. That's a full crew. Yesterday, we had 31. The day before that, we had 28. You know, and there's no more. You know, I've had daily conversations with Deputy Warden Thomas, who's been very helpful, and there are just no more. Everybody in there that's still in there is either on a medical situation or they've done something on the outside heinous enough to not be allowed back out, which does happen. That's a daily thing, too. And the 138 we started with yesterday, we didn't finish with 138. We had four that had to go back in because of various things. Their back hurts, their finger hurts, they bumped their head, whatever. So that's a starting number. That's not the ending number. So I ask for patience. There is a solution, and it's, because this is not viable. This is not a viable, long-term solution to this problem. We can't depend on, you know, 39% of our workforce to be available at any given time. That's just not going to work. I don't think anybody in here that's ever run a business or been in the business that says, "Hey, I can operate on 39% of my workforce and we can still keep going gung ho." It just doesn't work. The secret to this, or the actual this, is automation. We have to automate this. You guys saw a truck out, I believe that door right there, a couple of weeks ago. That's one of eight we have for recycling. May 10th, we go live with recycling. That gives us a tiny bit of relief, and I do mean tiny. It's a razor-thin edge, because we can take then those 16 inmates, put them on other activities, and it'll be yard waste, they'll go straight to yard waste, but that doesn't even fill up the void there. It just gets us started. The real solution is automation of your household garbage, automation of yard waste across the board. It's expensive, and it does, it's going to take some time, but that's got to be the answer to this problem. We just can't keep doing it with 39% of our workforce. It's not going to work. So I'll entertain questions.
And Counselor Garrett has a question, and I'll share with you that we get an inmate count from Warden Hammerick every week, and the state just is not forwarding inmates out to the county prisons. So we routinely have, where we used to have no beds available, we routinely have 150 to 170 beds that are available. And that is what is exacerbating the problem. You know, people don't like hearing that COVID-19 is the culprit for so many things, but it really does have a ripple effect. It does have an impact. And I commend Mr. Criddle and our staff for using this opportunity and viewing it as an opportunity instead of a huge problem, and trying to prepare us for situations where we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to deal with a shortage of personnel in the future by using some of these automated trucks. So Counselor Garrett?
I've got to leave the meeting in a little while for a medical appointment, but mine is not questions of praise. Director Criddle, you have done an amazing job, and I wish I could point out one name like Counselor Tucker did, but there have been so many times that I have emailed you and called you after hours, before hours. You obviously saw my email during the meeting, and I can't say enough about you. Your work ethic and your drive is amazing, and our citizens know we have issues, and we know, they know you're working on them. They know that there are things that we need to do, and I think you will have the full backing of this council, and our citizens and our constituents, if we need to automate, and that will make things better. I know that'll be an investment, but it's going to be an investment that will pay out returns. But I want to say publicly, thank you for me personally, for things you have done around my neighborhood, for my constituents, for people who are not even in my district. The immediacy with which he has responded to issues is incredible. I've even told constituents, this is Friday night, it's going to be probably Monday before you get done, and next thing I know, I get a text. Somehow, I don't know how, he got to it by Saturday, because they've been waiting for a couple of weeks. And communication is the biggest, biggest thing we need, and you have been the best communicator of anyone I've ever seen in any Public Works Department. I mean, it's just been incredible, because all we have to do is tell the citizens what's going on, and they will understand. And you have done that, you've been clear and transparent, and you have done everything in your power, and I am so grateful we have you in this city. And you, people make fun of our motto sometimes, but you truly do amazing, and Public Works and your employees does amazing, and I want to say that on the record.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Davis?
I appreciate it.
Yeah, mine's not so much about praise, although you got to give credit where credit is due, and I think I've had many comments in the past about, you know, just expressing the concerns of my constituents and praise, and I think Public Services is doing an outstanding job with what was just explained to us. A lot of the citizens really don't know that nor understand it. We tried recently, I think when the first media release came out, I sent it out to as many people as I could. I sent the second one out. I still think somehow people just don't, they just see what's out in front of their yards and not being picked up, and then it just starts the snowball of what's going on, you know, why are my services not being addressed? But they're unaware of having to deal with these issues, and it is a management nightmare. But what I really wanted to get on this morning is more about the action plan. I know that we keep talking about this and talking about and talk about. We understand the problem, but I don't think we've got time to wait or to wait on automation or wait on anything else. And I've said it many times, I'm willing to give my approval if it takes emergency funding to go out and deal with, contract out with subcontractors or companies that we can get this service provided. Because the problem is, Mayor, is that these are paid services, and we, people pay for a service to be given every week, regardless if you make the argument that it's, you know, they may be paying too less for the services provided. But we've, the city has cut back many times for various reasons over the years, but gone up on fees and still, I mean, we can only go so far with that. So as a representative of the citizenry, I mean, I'm just expressing that viewpoint that people want to have those services. So I don't know how, I don't know what the action plan is today, but we need to come up with something that can fill that void until we get to the next stage. And I don't know what that is, but I'm just expressing that concern. I'm wondering that with all this stimulus money now, that certainly you can make the case that this is COVID-related, its problems dealing with this pandemic that we've been addressed with. So I don't know. Can we get reimbursement for this? Can we utilize funds to expedite and provide these services? Can we ask for that? Can we ask for this support and funding to address this? Even, you know, you can make the case, do citizens need to be reimbursed? And I'm just going to throw that out on the table. You know, maybe, maybe we need to reimburse for a couple of months. And, I mean, I get that question all the time, and whether I feel like it's appropriate or not, I'm still putting it out there from a concern that I hear from my constituency all the time. That's my job, and I'm just relaying that. So, you know, whatever it takes, we need to try to come up with that action plan, and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see some ways to fill that void, and I'm willing to put my stamp of approval on it. It may cost some money, but, you know, we provide services.
And Ms. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, I have not had a conversation with Counselor Davis about COVID monies and not being able to wait and all those kind of buzzwords that you just said. You, you had me smiling, I'm looking back at the Deputy City Manager. You know- You know, a lot has been said. I appreciate comments from Counselor Walker Garrett in saying that, you know, just, just what he said about automating our trucks, and then Counselor Davis, you came in, but automating our system, our, is, is an investment, I heard Counselor Garrett say. It's an investment. And not only is it an investment, Counselor Garrett, it's best practices across America. And I do believe, as I listened to Counselor Davis talk, that we are better than operating, continuing to operate an antiquated system with prisoners, with men on the back of garbage trucks. I believe we are a 21st century city, and, and Counselor Davis, I agree with you that we don't have time to, to wait for automation. Automation is, is going to be expensive. We have put a number to it of twenty million dollars to go ahead and completely automate the system, and we have talked about staff. I believe it's a COVID expense, Counselor Davis, as you've just said, and I haven't had a conversation with you. That's why, you know, when you were talking, I'm just smiling, I'm like, who's he been talking to, you know? But I believe it's a twenty, it's a, it's a COVID-related expense, and to fully automate would be about twenty million dollars. And I don't believe we can wait when you consider a full crew is three hundred and fifty-three inmates, and everything that we do, as you heard the director say, at Public Works depends on inmate labor. And yesterday, he had a hundred and thirty-eight when you need three hundred and fifty-three. When you, when you think about that, automation can't wait. We, we cannot, the citizens have an expectation, and, you know, they, though they are not fully paying for the service, they're paying. And when you pay, you expect to get what you, we tell you you're paying for. You want your, we want everything collected. And so if we had a fully automated system, then the few inmates that we get, we can divert them to do those other things that need to be done at Public Works. But at thirty-nine percent labor capacity, you're going to get thirty-nine percent worth of work. And if, and when he puts that out there, and we, you know that, then we should not expect more than thirty-nine percent worth of work. You just, you can't get a hundred percent when you got a thirty-nine percent of your labor. And so, you know, automation can't work, and if we can figure it out, it needs to be a high priority. And so twenty million dollars, I mean, I don't know, the COVID money is, is pending, but it, it may be an opportunity, and an opportunity that we might not get anytime in the near future to automate and, and get away from inmate labor on the back of garbage trucks and use them to do those other things that need to be done. And so Counselor Garrett, great comments, you know, absolutely on point, and Counselor Davis, absolutely on point. So thank you for your comments.
Well, and, and Mr. City Manager, I'm with you. I mean, I, I understand the automation, and, and I would be in favor, yes, you got to find solutions as you move forward. It just, you just got to do that. You got to stay ahead of the curve. Right now, I feel like we're behind the curve. Because here's what's happening, and that, and again, I mean, your job is to express it from the management side to us, what's going on. You're doing a very good job. The director's doing a very good job, but our job is to communicate what we're hearing in the community back to the, the management, and people are doing what we told them to do. They know what to do, and the routines are putting their stuff out. They're still, they're doing it, and they're doing it weekly, and they're doing it on their day, and we've spent a long time on getting the schedules in place and people adhering to the schedules and all, and now it's, it's not happening. That's the part that, that I'm focusing on. What's the, you know, the immediate action plan that we got to deal with that? I don't know what to tell my constituency, and they leave, that stuff just stays out there. Maybe there, we got to, I don't know how to get that message out, Mayor. I mean, if we got to tell them to adjust because of what's happened, if we got to tell them to get some source to get rid of this stuff or to get it where it needs to go versus piling up in their yard, I mean, it's that time of the year now that people are out doing the yard work, and it's just going to get, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a problem. The only thing I can think of is to contract out somehow and to fill that void. If we need to do that, to me, that's emergency funding that, of a service that, that we provide and people pay. They pay a hundred percent. They don't pay thirty-nine percent, they pay a hundred percent of their services, and, you know, we got to, we got to be sensitive to that, I guess. The citizenry will put up with so much, but eventually, you know, I'm starting to get those questions about, well, wait a minute, you know? I'm not, I'm paying full price, but I'm not getting my service. I, I don't know what the answer is right now, but part of me says, well, maybe we need, you know, you know, certainly the city needs the funds to keep things going, but, you know, maybe we need to be thinking about some reimbursement or to, to, if, because it, it, it does place, it does place a hindrance on the property owner, and not only paying the bill for the services, but they're having to pay extra to get rid of it. So it's a compounding matter, and I just, that's what I'm trying to express at the table today.
Well, and, and if I may, Counselor, you know, certainly we could look at contracting out, but, and when you say they're paying full price, you know, they're paying eighteen dollars. And when you look to our neighbor, Phoenix City, and I hate to always compare to Phoenix City, but I own property in Phoenix City, and I pay for waste collection, and they have automated trucks. They don't have prison labor or, or citizen labor on the back of trucks. They have automated trucks, and you get what you pay for. And in Phoenix City, every Friday, you know, they pick up the trash. The truck comes by, it reaches out and grabs it, dumps it, and it keeps moving. There's one operator. And so, you know, certainly we can look at contracting it out to the same provider in Phoenix City if you want, because they know how to do it, but the cost is passed on to the citizen, and it's not going to be eighteen dollars. And so, and so the options would be, you know, contract it out, and it's a pass-through. Whatever it costs, that's what the citizen pays, because it's your service. When you say you pay, you know, you're paying for it and you are to get it, well, certainly we can get a price quote and say, here it is. We don't have the trucks, and we can get with every household and get what the water works and say, put it on the water bill, and that's your cost. Or we can, if we hold on, and I don't know what stimulus American recovery will, and what qualifies, but certainly, Mr. Critle told me some city in...
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin, they used stimulus money to do exactly this, is what he told me. And if they did it in Wisconsin, it depends on how you want to spend your money, stimulus money, we, should we try and do it here? But, and, and if we did it here, you know, citizens, the price, the eighteen dollars still works. But if you contract it out, I don't think you can contract it out and say, you know, the city, it's going to cost you thirty-nine dollars a month, and the city's going to pay for it. Well, it's a pass-through. And so those are our options, and so we can certainly bring options.
Well, look, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get into the cost analysis because there's give and take on both sides when you pay for services. And I get into service, and there's a cost savings, okay? So somewhere that plays and factors in. But, I mean, we, we need to, I, I need something to go, I can't just go back to my citizenry and say that citizenry and just say, leave it out on the curb, and they'll get it when they can get it.
Well, I think, I think what I...
I can't do that.
What I heard the director say, and I think you are what, three days behind?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'm saying your expectations need to be adjusted slightly for now. They don't, they're not always three days behind. They get caught up. He is simply saying, three, we're three days behind in, in yard waste, not household waste.
Right.
They pick up your household waste every, on your schedule, but yard waste is not, because it doesn't stink, it's not, it's, the, household waste is the priority, and we got inmates. And so, and so what, what they are doing, they're, they're three days behind, and so I think what he's here saying is, we're three days behind, and I know that you don't like for us to be behind, but when we get thirty-nine, have thirty-nine percent of our labor, we normally get three hundred and fifty-three inmates, and we get a hundred and thirty-eight, and we're three days behind, we're still doing pretty good.
No, I'm, look, I, I'm, I think, like I said, I praise the department. It's just the, the management nightmare and the job they're doing. They're doing tremendous job, okay? And I know that people will come and go, but look, I mean, over the last year plus, you know, we have these spells that have been more frequently here and there. I don't think, my business side of me tells me this is not the last time. So...
It's not.
You can tell citizens that today, but if it happens again, I mean, we're, I guess my point is, that I said earlier, I'm going, I'm having to go back and tell them the same story that we're being told. We need to figure out how we're going to deal with this in the mean term, mid, in, in the meantime, or you got to communicate to us that this is just the way it is until we get to automation, and I, I don't know the answer. I'm searching for what I need to take back to my citizenry, because I'm getting the questions.
And I will come back and, and share that with you, but I will say to you that we are one to three days behind right now, and as it gets warmer and people are pruning more and more yard waste, we could get further behind. But, but, and, and we'll keep you informed, and we just ask for understanding, and that's why we're being transparent and sharing with you, here's what we've got. And we're faced with not aging equipment, we're faced with thirty-nine percent of our labor that we're, we don't have control over getting. It's not like we have a payroll and we're trying to go out and hire these people. And, and so we need understanding that we are going to fall behind. Sometimes we, we're not always three days behind, we get caught up. But occasionally, we are going to fall one to three days behind or a week behind as we've done, but they are working Wednesdays and Saturdays, non-traditional workdays at Public Works. They're working, he says, it's the norm now. You work Wednesdays, you work Saturdays. And so we need understanding, and I think we've got to look at a more permanent solution, and I believe the more permanent solution is to go fully automated, which is best practices today. You know, as I travel around, I shouldn't have to go across to Phoenix City and see a fully automated system. You know, and, and Columbus, we have our, I shouldn't go to Florida to visit my relatives, and they got a fully automated, we need a fully automated system, and we are going to bring you proposals on how to get there.
Well, if I, if I can add something, why don't we try to bring this together? Because I, I think that there's three things that I've heard the two of you touch on. One is, we're running one to three days behind, so we need to come up with a better way to communicate so the public knows what's going on, when it's going on. We also ought to take a look at, because I know we did on, for a short period of time when we got way behind, we contracted with an individual who had a, a boom truck that was going and helping in some of the trouble spots. Let's get a cost on that and see what, if, if that's still a possibility. And then let's also continue to aggressively pursue a, a scenario in which we would have a much more automated workforce and, and solution. Because I, over the past several years, I mean, COVID has hit us pretty hard, but over the past several years, we've seen more sick outs and just a less dependable workforce coming from the, coming from the MCP, and, and they do a great job, but it's, I, I think we're beginning to see that that's not a sustainable process going into the future. So if we do those three things, we just try to communicate a little bit better and more frequently, and we're going to rely on council and all of us through social media and through contacting and addressing our constituents when they call to let them know where we are at that point in time. Maybe put something out every Friday. We can get something out from Public Works, give us an update on where we are and how many days we're behind. And then the second thing we do is we'll look at the cost of, of supplementing that, that pickup, and then we'll continue to work towards a more automated process.
Well, and I agree, Mayor, and you probably received in this room an automated phone call, text message, communicated that, the status, and we'll continue to communicate with citizens to let them know. But, you know, I, I don't like my yard waste being one day behind either, but we, communications is key, and, and that's why I say we need to communicate it, then we need to understand it, and that's why Director Critle wanted to be here today to make sure that we are all clear on the problem. And, and we know how to fix it, but it takes funding, and, and stimulus might be that funding source.
Well, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Director Critle, I mean, I, I do understand, and I think this conversation has been good, okay? Even though it's lengthy, it's good because the citizens can really get a chance to understand in detail, one, feel like they're represented, two, and then hear what's happening on the, on the management side and providing services. I do want to caution the, well, caution's probably not the word, but, you know, the, there's a lot of predictions now with the economy heating up and things happening and kicking into full, full speed here soon, and we all know that we can't even get a vehicle these days. You know, it's hard to even come up, find a vehicle these days for various reasons. Now, I would ca, I would caution the city not to think that all of a sudden you're going to be able to acquire all this equipment, because I'm sure there's other people that are thinking there's going to be a massive need. So I don't know when that date is, and certainly it would probably be stair-stepped in over, over time, but, you know, we just need to be able to communicate to our constituencies how to, how to deal with the current status. And I think, I appreciate your comments, the comments being made, Mayor. I think it's very appropriate to have the conversation today.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Huff?
Director Critical, thank you so much for being here. Let me piggyback with the other counselors by saying thank you so much for the great job that you're doing. I personally missed the last council meeting because someone decided to dump siding and roofing shingles and wood and everything up and down my street about eleven o'clock at night. And I reported it as a non-emergency to the police department, and a couple of officers came out. One officer in particular took his own hands and feet and pushed a lot of the trash and things out of the street himself to the side, and sent a text message to Director Critle and email or whatever, but he did receive it. And I stayed in the neighborhood that morning to make sure, because neighbors were out and about trying to get to work. Those that were home were a little concerned about maneuvering through the streets and their tires and everything. So Director Critle had someone in the neighborhood by probably nine, nine fifteen, and there were a couple of trucks. One truck came in and did such a great job, I was teasing him because I never tell anyone that I'm a city counselor. I'm just a citizen with a problem. And one of the, our own consolidated workers was doing such a great job in getting everything cleaned up. He walked up to me and he asked, he said, so could I get your name and your address and phone number so I can report in when I get back? And I said, you sure can, and I just told him Bruce Huff, and I gave him that. And so as he was writing, he, he thought about it, and he looked at me, he said, are you? I said, I am, but that doesn't matter, I'm just a citizen today. Just turn that in, let them know that you were here, and I appreciate all that you've done. So they, they did a remarkable job, took them about thirty, forty-five minutes. We had neighbors walking up the street to make sure that they came down the street, and never seen anything like it. I think it was a contractor, somebody doing some late-night work, and they decided just not to pay the tipping fees, and they decided to dump it up and down the street at night. uh, at night. But thank you so much. I think we had a conversation some time ago about the automation, uh, and, uh, cameras in the city and different things. So I will say, uh, to piggyback with the city manager, uh, I have this conversation with my brother Kenneth in California. And he smiles and laughs at me on the telephone all the time about us getting caught up. So it, it's time to make a move. He said he's been automated since nineteen ninety. So, so I hope we can figure out a way to get this done and, and, and move ahead and, uh, get things, uh, moved in the right direction. But personally, thank you, thank you to the staff, thank you to Director Tia Shu Johnson. Uh, she receives my calls all the time, so if I'm not directly to you, I'm coming directly through her to you. So I appreciate you both. So thank you so much.
Mayor Prochel?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Krydle and City Manager, I want, I want all, both of y'all to take this in the veins and it's intended. Uh, I think I can speak safely for every council. We've all received requests and, uh, some issue pops up and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the city makes, the, your staff makes the city look good and, and I appreciate that. And that's all we're asking for, is just when somebody calls us, we just, we need a little help and, you know, y'all, y'all go beyond the, beyond the call every time. Uh, Mr. Krydle, you, you've just hit the ground running and done tremendously since you've been here. Um, and I, again, I think I can speak for all council and, and say in that, so I appreciate what you've done. I do have a question about the ordering of the equipment. Do you know what lead time it is for the graballs and then the, the, I think it was a garbage truck that we, was demonstrated out here a few weeks ago?
Yes, sir. The automated side loaders are about, right now, they're about sixty days out if we ordered them today. Now that, as one of the counselors said, I was Counsel David, that, that number will probably slide, but right now they're about sixty days out. Now the quantity we would need, I would say we could get partial shipments in sixty days, but we're probably looking at total automation is gonna take about probably six months. And, and that's because not necessarily the trucks, but the containers. There's actually a longer lead item on those containers than the trucks. The containers are, are even more difficult, the ninety-four gallon carts that we'd use for, then for household garbage and for yard waste.
Okay. That, that's encouraging in itself. I was thinking you were gonna say much longer than that, so. That, that's good to hear. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Crabbe?
Um, thank you. Counselor Allen kind of, um, alluded to one of the questions that I had. I do, um, about the time to implement this, if, if you had the twenty million today, how long would it take you to implement it? And you said six months. Um, how many of the automated trucks do we have right now?
We have eight. Those are for recycling. Yes, ma'am.
And how many, um, total do you think we need?
I've got that number right here, just one second. I'm a little shorthanded, no pun intended.
Yeah.
Um, for household garbage, we need twenty-four, yard waste, we need fourteen, and for recycling, what we predict to be a growth, which we're seeing now, we would need two more, so that's a total of forty. That's forty side load automated trucks.
So we need an additional forty?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
And next, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, the Civic Center Director Rob Landers, and then he will be followed by Haley Chilary of the Trade Center.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Manager, Deputy City Manager and City Council Members. Appreciate you guys letting me come before you just to kinda give a update on where we are with the Civic Center as we start to see some restrictions start to roll back and moving forward as it relates to events and entertainment. Passing out right now a, a presentation that briefly highlights some of the things that we have worked on over the last six to seven months, what we're currently working on and as well as what we're looking at for the future. Um, so a lot of this presentation, I'm gonna try to be as, as brief as possible and get to some of the high level bullet points to allow for questions and answers at the end. Uh, but ultimately, if we go to the first page, um, you know, this is basically a review. So, uh, twenty twenty was a year like any other. Uh, obviously, uh, with this global pandemic, it has affected our everyday lives, uh, and especially as having an effect on the arts, entertainment and hospitality industries, which we're currently seeing right now. Uh, but we are starting to see per se a light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, so with all of that being said and the adversities that we are, we have, we have faced, we still have the challenge of, of pressing on. So just to provide a brief summary, um, over the past year, uh, we've had to work outside the box. Uh, we had to develop new programming, what we call self-produced events, uh, that was new to the Civic Center. Uh, what does that look like? Self-produced event was, um, our team creating a concept, uh, creating a marketing plan, creating how do we promote it, and ultimately, how do we generate revenue? Uh, that had never been done before in the history of the Civic Center. Uh, and we started to activate this last year simply with our, our drive-in movie series that came to be a, a, a unique hit for the community during a time where we couldn't have social, uh, gatherings. It allowed us for so, a, a safe opportunity for us to come together as a community. Uh, furthermore, that transitioned over into our Civic Center transitioning into essential, into an essential building for the city, uh, hosting, uh, city council, uh, political rallies that we had, uh, as a early voting, uh, destination. Uh, so we put on various amounts of events that pressed our team, um, to the limits of their skills and abilities, uh, but opened up a new opportunity for us to utilize the facility as a, as a full-service venue. Uh, so, uh, as we progress currently, um, you know, these new events opened up the opportunity for us to work with new partners. Uh, during those times, we did a lot of, uh, events with, uh, Columbus State University. Uh, we did a fundraising event with the United Negro College Fund. Uh, we worked with our, our local Muskogee County Democratic Board, uh, and, and these were all new partnerships that were developed in the, during these times of us having to create these unprecedented events. Uh, so with that being said, some of those achievements are, I think we're in a place right now where we're starting to make the effort for the Civic Center to be more than just a venue that hosts our football games, our hockey games and our concerts. It has become a pillar in the community. And I think going forward, that's what we are going to aim for, is for us to be an essential safe haven for the community as it relates to, uh, you know, community events, uh, organizational events, uh, our concerts, our teams and new opportunities that are presenting itself each and every day. So the first thing we had to look at this past year was how do we keep our team members and staff safe? It was a challenge for us to telework as it, at our operations, we have to be onsite, uh, working with our vendors that are coming in, working with our key tenants, to still develop a game plan for us to be able to successfully operate during those times. Um, so in that process, this was one of the first things I did when I got on board, was we tried to create a safe atmosphere as best as we can with the information that was available. And with that, we created a three-tier plan. Now this three-tier plan was reflective of how do we operate our day-to-day operations just from our internal staff before we even can get to a point of allowing people into the building. So in a part of that, we took a lot of information from some of the standard operating procedures that we saw around the country and at that time, some of the best practices programs that were implied by the CDC and the Department of Health. So in that process, we planned, we prepared and we proceeded. Planning started with a, a revamp of our daily operations with our staff, having to implement guidelines as it relates to employee health and hygiene, screening, training for all of, everything that we've had to do in the last year and that we're gonna have to do in the future is all brand new. Uh, there is no, um, quote unquote, uh, blueprint for success from an events and entertainment standpoint. We are creating that right now. And we're doing that with, uh, working with national organizations and even worldwide organizations. Uh, so with all that information, uh, we tried to put in place a plan that we felt was gonna be best served for our team members as well as, uh, vendors and, and citizens of the community. Preparing, uh, we went through a meticulous preparation process in preparing the building to be able to be reopened whenever that was gonna take place. Um, from, uh, utilizing some of the funding that we received from, from grants to upgrade our infrastructure, uh, to when you go to our restrooms now, all the restrooms, uh, dispensers are touchless. Uh, we have various signage throughout the building, uh, to help with circulation and traffic flow. We've got a new pre-screening process and that's where we kinda rolled into our proceed. How do we allow people back into the building? Well, a part of that plan was to get caught up to twenty-first century. Um, as you go, as you, uh, visit other, uh, facilities and venues across the nation, they have a, a, a digital platform. And so we utilize some of our funding, our COVID funding, to put in those digital platforms to mitigate the risk of spreading COVID nineteen when you come to our events. Uh, and this is seen, uh, through various infrastructure upgrades that we've currently put in place and items that we have on our agenda to put in place. And I'll touch bases on more of those, uh, further in the presentation. But again, our biggest focus was, you know, our number one focus was keeping our team, staff, vendors and guests safe coming into the building. So this incorporated a plan of, uh, adapting a new health assessment, obviously wearing our face coverings, uh, nitrate gels for anyone that's coming in contact with any guests that come into our building and obviously the frequent hand washing. Uh, these now are a part of our day-to-day lives and at that time, last year, uh, you know, this time last year, these things were just being rolled out for us. But we've had to adapt and incorporate these into our day-to-day processes. So one of the biggest things is, uh, you know, and I've mentioned to my staff and I, and I get a chance to mention citizens, is that with the new programs, guidelines and processes that are in place, it's almost as if we're opening a brand-new Civic Center. Because how we've operated in the past, we cannot fully operate in that direction in order for us to provide a safe facility for our guests to come into. So one of the major, uh, pieces to that is the communication. And we're currently and still working on getting this communication out to anyone that's coming to our building about these new safe, safe guides, safety guidelines that we have in place. And a part of that is through our website, our social media channels, our ticketing purchase. This was a part of that digital platform that I kinda mentioned earlier. You can now come into our building, purchase your tickets online and walk in and be able to scan your ticket on your phone. This is a standard operating procedure that's been at other venues over the last decade and we've finally been able to move forward to, to put that in place in our Civic Center and it's a great and added feature. So if you haven't been, I'm excited to, uh, show you and demonstrate how this works. Our box office team worked diligently in getting this into place and, and it's worked extremely successful. Mobile ordering, that's gonna be new for us in twenty twenty-one. Uh, by the end of the calendar year, you know, working with our finance, we've been going through and looking at POS systems that where, when you go to one of our hockey games or you go to a Lions game, wherever you're sitting, you'll be able to order your, your food from your seat and it'll send you a text message to let you know when it's ready to pick up. That helps us on a multitude. It provides a new and unique experience that's a standard operating procedure that you see at most venues. Number two, it mitigates the amount of people that are standing in line and it helps no one miss the action that's going on. So this is something that we are currently working on, we know we will have it in place by the end of the year, we've been testing it out, um, and that's a new feature that's gonna help us to get into the twenty-first century. Uh, now cashless process, cashless process is a new best practice that's going around, uh, the entire world. Uh, Mercedes-Benz Stadium was one of the first facilities to go totally cashless in this building. Now we won't transition to a hundred percent cashless building, but we are gonna emphasize, uh, for our guests to bring their credit cards and debit cards, because a part of our POS systems, we'll have those upgraded to where you'll have tap-to-pay, which you can do at any gas station, you can do at any grocery store, you'll still be able to do that at some of our concession stands. And in addition to that, any purchases from merchandising that take place, we wanna be able to get you, the whole purpose of this is, we wanna be able to get you back to your seat so you can enjoy the entertainment as quickly as possible. If you take a look at some of our graphics, uh, this COVID nineteen safety guidelines, our, our events manager worked diligently with one of our local vendors, uh, to get some of this signage that's in place. So again, if you come to our venue, you'll see these safety guidelines, uh, banners, signs, we even have it on the floor to try to keep people going into certain circulation so that we're mitigating the opportunity of people crossing paths when they're going throughout the building. You're gonna see Plexiglas that's at all of our concession stands, you're gonna see six-foot markers at all of our concession stands. Now, all of these plans we put into place, we didn't reinvent the wheel on this. These are same items that you're seeing at the larger facilities from AT&T Stadium, uh, to Madison Square Garden, uh, to, to the Garden in Boston. So what we are doing is incorporating what is a national standard best practice and we're bringing it to Columbus. Now, one of the challenges that we've had in that process is communicating that to our guests and communicating that to the community. Because a lot of these upgrades and infrastructure in place, in I'm gonna say we're putting into place, they are, uh, not the best well-received at first. But these guidelines are put into place as a national best practice for us to be able to not only move forward, but to keep our guests safe, keep our vendors safe, keep our staff safe and provide an overall better experience for everyone that's come. So it's a, it's a sort of a, uh, I like to phrase it to my team as, it's a growing pain. Uh, because it can be painful when you come and say, okay, well now there's a new bag policy, nobody ever told me about a bag policy. Well, bag policies have been in place for over a decade. It's just a matter of us getting it in place and incorporating it right now so that we can have a better screening process, which ensures more safety in the building, but it also helps you get through the lines quicker. So if you're running late because you had to drop your child off at daycare or childcare or, uh, getting off to work and you're rushing and try to get to the building, well guess what? We're gonna get you in the building and get you to your seats a little bit faster because of these processes that we're putting in place. Again, our signage, uh, I, I kinda mentioned that and I kinda touched base about our security screen. A product of the funding, if you'll come to our building, you'll see these funny little, uh, rectangular squares. Well, those are the magnetometers that I talked about six or seven months ago. And working with city leadership, we were able to press forward and get those purchased. We were able to purchase ten magnetometers. Again, a standard operating procedure that's been in a place, in place at operating venues across the country for over a decade. And we finally got them in place. And so our processing time, if you come to a hockey game or you come to an event right now, you will see, you will probably not see any lines. And that's because we're getting people through our corrals very quickly. The security screening process, yes, it is new and yes, it may be troublesome for a few, but it's also getting you into the building in quicker and safer. The bag policy, it is a topic of debate across the entire world at events venues, not just here at Columbus. Because it's new, it's different. You've always been able to bring your purse or your bookbag or, uh, any of your items into the building. But the reason that these are in place is because research has been conducted from the national security and safety, uh, standards in homeland security that put these, uh, guidelines in place that helps your building to be more safe and secure. Uh, you'll be amazed at some of the videos you watch from a security standpoint that show the, the lengths that some people will take to get a weapon into the building. And I guarantee you, it's happened before, it's just a matter of we haven't caught it. But with some of these programs and, and security guidelines that we're putting in place, it's gonna help better prepare our safety, our safety team to find these items before they get into our building, making our building more secure. And so we try to get all of this information out again through our new website, uh, through our social media channels. When you come to our building now, as you are standing in line, we actually are utilizing the speakers outdoors. And we have music playing and a music will play, a song will play, and then we'll have a PA announcement. The PA announcement will talk about our no-bag policy, it'll talk about our social distancing. So while you're standing in line, you're not only seeing it prior to you get in line, while you're in line, while you're listening in line and before you get into our building. It's all a matter of educating our guests on the new processes that we have to put in place to make sure that everyone is safe in the building. So the future. One of the first things that I wanted to do, getting, um, on board, was to, uh, outline our culture. So a lot of these items that I discussed already about us getting up to the twenty-first century, you have to match that with, um, an impression and improving your culture within your building. Um, so one of the biggest challenges that I have pressed my team with is that we are more than just an event center. We have an opportunity to have an effect on the entire community and help to address some of the concerns that some of our, uh, city citizens present to us. We can do that through our building. And we can do that with the staff that we have in place because they're experienced, they're talented and they also are members of the community. So three items that we looked at was updating our mission. And I'm not gonna read it word for word, I'm gonna paraphrase it, but we wanna put in place a world-class, uh, culture to produce- But we want to put in place a world-class culture to produce long-lasting memories and experiences while embracing our diverse and rich history here in Columbus. So how do we do this? Well, I had to set the vision. As I tell my team, I put in place the address. And we have to work as a team to get to that address at a certain amount of time. And so, this vision outlines that address. And so, as a venue, as a full-service venue for the Columbus and Muskogee County, we're going to provide this world-class atmosphere by creating and producing new events that will be a pillar for local gatherings. And how do we incorporate that on a day-to-day basis? Well, that's where our values come into place. And that's where we're holding ourselves accountable. We're trying to be most proficient people in our workspace as possible. I'm empowering my team to own this building. I tell them that we've been lucky. This is the home of our community citizens, and we've been entrusted with the keys to this home. So it's our responsibility to make sure that when you come home, home looks good. Teamwork. This is us pressing forward, working through our differences, working through conflict to accomplish one common goal. And being versatile. I tell my team all the time, I might get information on Monday, we have our staff meetings on Tuesday afternoon. By Thursday, I've gotten a new update from the CDC or a new update from a Georgia Facilities Group that we're a part of with new information that we need to apply immediately to help make our building as safe as possible. So this was very important for me, for us to outline, how are we going to get there? When are we going to get there? And what we must do in order to accomplish those goals?
Excuse me, excuse me, Rob. Counselor Huff has a question.
Thank you for being here this morning. Quick question on the bag policy?
Yes.
If they have children, babies, that'd be like kiddy function only, or what, that they could bring a baby bag in?
Correct. So the exceptions to the bag policy are going to be for medical bags and diaper bags. So anyone that has a diaper bag for children or accessories that they need for the children, they can definitely bring those in. Anyone that has medical needs, they are able to bring their medical bag, but all of these bags are still subject to security screening. And in addition to that, we are allowing a clutch and a wallet. And I have more updates on that. So we, so, you know, anyone that's bringing in a wallet of a certain size and a clutch, those will be allowed. And we're also in the future working on a clear bag policy. So we have a clear bag policy that we want to implement. It's just right now with COVID, yes, we're seeing restrictions rolled back, but at the height of it, it was recommended by even Homeland Security to have no bags. Right now, if you go to any MLB stadium, they have a no-bag policy, period.
Okay.
So we're working on a clear bag policy for the future, but we're also going to have it to where if anyone comes, let's say you come out of town for a game and you didn't know, we'll make accommodations for those guests because we don't want to make it where it's a terrible experience. So we're going to make compromises in order to get you into the building.
Okay. One other question. On the card and cash policy for concessions, what would be the difference for the person using cash versus using a card?
Well, there really won't be like an actual financial difference. But the difference that it will have is for us to mitigate that transfer of potential COVID. That's one of the reasons that it's put in place is for that cash and transfer. And also, it helps speed up the process of checkout.
Oh, yeah, I'm good. I'm just wondering, you know, if it was a difference in them having to get up and go to the concession stand because they had cash versus the card you could order from your seat?
So it'd be a combination of both. Once we put in place the mobile ordering process, which is going to be really cool, they won't even have to pull out that card at any point because they'll be making that purchase, just like you would from Grubhub. It's a similar platform where you'll put in your information, it's paid for already. So when you go to pick up, you're just showing a receipt on your phone to pick up your food. So that's going to be an added feature. But if you don't have that application or don't want to utilize, and you're just, you know, old-school and you take cash around, we're still going to make that accommodation for anyone that brings cash in.
Okay. Thank you.
So that means I better speed up a little bit because this is what I love to do, and I could probably talk about this all day. So our four pillars for success. So how are we going to accomplish these goals? We're going to do it through world-class experience, operational excellence, 21st-century branding and marketing, and our service to our community. So what does world-class experience look like? Well, world-class experience looks like listening to your guests and taking into consideration what it is that they want to see for their building. And that's what we're doing. That's the first step is for us to listen to the community. And trust me, my phone has rang, and I've gotten the emails, and I've gotten the text message on what the community wants to see, and our team is working actively to put those items in place. So a part of that world-class experience, what does that look like? You know, how do we vision that, Rob? What does that look like? It starts with a new culinary experience, a new guest experience, team culture, and capital upgrades. These four elements combined is going to equate to that world-class experience. So we're going to see that through our pouring rights, RFP that's already currently out, and our committee is reviewing. That's going to bring in a new, strong partner for our pouring rights, exclusive rights, new concession partners. We're going to have an anchor tenant, RFP that's going to go out in the next six weeks, we hope, where in the future, we have those businesses that we used to have in the building, like a Chick-fil-A or a local business and mom-and-pop shop. We're going to give them that platform and opportunity to operate in our building again. Potentially, we're going to be able to provide this new premium experience with upgrades in our concession, which is what we're going to be proposing as far as, you know, again, how do we get, almost kind of like you see what the marketplace is in Uptown. We can put that same similar process into our building so that people are attracted to and know that they're going to get a premium experience when they come into our building from a food standpoint. We've talked about our guest experience. We have changed the patron attitude versus guest. You see me say it multiple times. That was one of the things that I've wanted to get our team to understand, that they are a guest into our building. And so, we need to go to the, every extent to make them feel and show that true southern hospitality. And a part of that is creating a new team culture to understand that. Our team has to understand that I want us to press them to their limits, I want to press their skills, and I want to be able to squeeze out their talents as much as possible in carving out what this new civic center is going to look like. Operational excellence. Operational excellence is going to be two major factors. That's going to be our operations piece, and that's going to be our finance piece. Obviously, we've seen a decline in our revenues from COVID-19, so we have to be smart and savvy with our finances throughout the day-to-day and really question, not only is this going to be applicable and valued to our building, but also to the citizens, and also putting in the safeguards and buffers for the future. There's several things that we've purchased at the civic center that we didn't look into the maintenance costs on them. So now, five and six and seven years later, now we're stuck with can't even be maintained. If you take a look at our marquee building, if you ride by right now, it's not the prettiest sight. Well, it's at a point where we did not anticipate the software changes when we made that purchase on that marquee. So now, in order to, we can't even change out the marquee. That software isn't even available. And we've already spent, you know, thousands of dollars just for someone to tell us, hey, you can't even, I can't even change a bulb out on a LED screen. It has to be fully, completely replaced. So those are the things that we're trying to do right now is be strategic and looking at a five-year capital investment, 10-year capital investment, 20-year in capital investment. So that way, we're incorporating those maintenance costs now so that five years from now, we're not looking at a situation of where everything has to be totally replaced. This chart just diagrams some of the operational activities that we're currently working on. Building maintenance, beautification, capital projects, working with Mr. Hart over at the maintenance and developing a plan to replace some of our larger capital items, our boiler, our roof, which I know kind of gives a lot of people chills. And I'm pretty sure I'll be right back up in here in the next three months or so giving a presentation on how we can replace our roof efficiently with eco-friendly green products so now that we can get rebates from the state and federal where the roof will be paid for itself in the next 10 to 15 years. Upgrading our work order system, cleaning and disinfecting, that's a new process for us. My janitorial staff now has to go through, and every week, they have to submit to me a report of all the items that they've cleaned into the building, and I expect my supervisor to go back to validate that. That's including the high-touch-point areas because all of that was new a part of COVID-19 because my biggest, my biggest challenge was how do I keep my employees safe on a day-to-day basis? PMI projects, potential new projects, additional revenue streams. These are going to come through self-produced events, corporate sponsorship, advertising, naming rights, and concession improvements. Capital upgrades. So, Rob, we've seen it before. It gets submitted by every director every single year what they want to see. Well, the difference is, now we have to get ourselves in the 21st century. We just had a long conversation about getting ourselves from a waste management standpoint. Well, if we continue to debate and discuss the things that need to get done, it's not going to be able to be maintained. It's going to have to be replaced. So we're going to have to make that short-term investment so that we have that long-term value growth. For example, digital voms. We have those old static cleans that have been there since 1996 with the backlit. You don't even see that in any venues. You see that at a high school gym right now. And I'm just being very frank because these are items that we need to get addressed. And having a digital vom, where does that return value? Now, our teams can go out and sell more advertising because they're not static for the entire event. They can put up multiple sponsors through an event. And how cool has it been if you go to an event arena and they have it, and McDonald's comes up as a sponsor, now the whole building turns red. So it immediately draws the guests to that attention, and you're providing a ROI for that sponsor. And we just have to put these in because, again, this is going to drive us into the next 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years. Telescopic improvements. It's safe to say that we've had a couple of people who have fallen into our, fell into our telescopics. That's a safety concern. So we have an opportunity now to only upgrade it. We can upgrade it to make it safe, but now we have premium seating, an option that we didn't have because of the architecture of the building. So these, this is an example of a telescopic improvement where we can actually put in leather chairs that move in and move out. And now, we have an additional feature which is going to drive more promoters and organizers to our building because they know that we have a premium seat option. So they can add that on to their ticket options. Parking deck. That one might bring chills to you. Why not? We have the space for it. We can build a four-level parking deck right now in Lot D and gain additional revenue. Where does this add value to our tenants? They have an opportunity to sell a VIP package to their premium seating for their ticketing. You have a regular option for when anyone comes to our games. We can upgrade our parking to provide revenue, additional revenue for not only short-term and long-term. I've already done the cost. It's going to cost us 7.5 million. But we would be able to bring that money and that ROI back because of how we're able to charge for each spaces. Imagine now at South Commons, when you come, if you, if it's raining outside, you've got a covered area to park. And you are willing to pay for it, and it's secure. We need marquee replacement. It cannot be fixed. There's no tech company that can come out and change the LED bulbs. It needs a full-on replacement. And that's going to help us with, we have to put out variable messaging boards right now. If you come to the building for COVID-19 vaccination, or you're coming to a game or coming to an event, we've got the LED board that we got to roll out, we got to call somebody to come and roll it out, set it up, right? Got to go back and read it. Well, if we have our own marquee replacement, this is something that we can do right now that would exchange for that variable messaging board and give more communication, better communication when people come into our building. Sorry, I'm going to definitely try to speed it up, I'm sorry. So 21st-century marketing and branding. If you've been to our website, we worked with the IT department for the last six months, and we have a brand-new website. It is easy to read, you're able to get to where you're looking for, whether you're trying to purchase tickets or see where the upcoming events. So just, you know, definitely kudos to Forrest and Michael and Pam and his team that helped us to put this together over the last six months. And what we did was, we updated it based upon standard industry practice for websites that are for event venues across the country. Optimizing brand positioning. What does that mean, Rob? That means bringing in an additional revenue stream for the building that we can account for that will help us to offset some of these costs. So optimizing brand positioning means establishing partnerships with not only local but national brands. And we've already started doing this. So our building, there's no other building in Columbus that can attract the most amount of impressions that we can at one time. If we have an event and we have 6,000 people, guess how much potential ROI that is for a local business or a national business at one time? There's no other building, no other facility in our surrounding areas that can do that. And so, it's my job to make sure that I am presenting that to those potential partners is that if you want a ROI, you have to gather impressions. And the way that you gather impressions is coming to our building with these new added features, making people, I want someone to walk into our building and say, wow, wow, a lot has changed over the last 20 years, but I'm going to need your support in order to make that happen. But we already are putting those plans into place. I have Peach State Health Plan. Just a week ago, we signed an annual sponsorship contract with Peach State Health Plan. It's the largest sponsorship package that has ever been signed by the civic center. This isn't an advertising deal, this is a sponsorship deal, meaning that they're invested in us. They want to be our community partner. So they saw the drive-in movies, they saw the food giveaways that we produced, they saw the UNCF, they saw the homecoming that we did with Columbus State. They said, we want to be a part of that. So they are our official sponsor as it relates to any community events that we have, which means now I can roll out more community events because I have funding to put those events on at no cost to the community. And that's what we're looking at as basically, as it relates to optimizing brand positioning, which rolls into our service to community. This is something that's integral to me because I always prayed that if I got into this position, I knew that I was going to take advantage of it to give back to the community. So as I mentioned before, we're going to be more than just an event venue. We're going to actually provide a service to our community. And these are some of the clients that we've already been working with and that we're working for. Boys and Girls Club of Columbus. I've partnered with, you know, our councilwoman, Mimi Woodson, and we're working with the Boys and Girls Club to start an urban hockey initiative. I cannot count, and I know you all know, how many people that say, I didn't even know we had an ice rink. Well, this is one of the ways that we're going to get into the underserved community to provide them exposure to not only an ice rink, but exposure to a new sport and new way of even working behind the scenes. So this Friday, we actually have our first game of where we're working with the Boys and Girls Club's teen center. They'll be coming to their first hockey game this Friday. We're going to introduce them to a player, they're going to get a behind-the-scenes tour of the facility. And the goal is for us to have a long-term program for our underserved youth to be able to learn to skate and eventually learn to play hockey. So I'm working directly with Mimi Woodson in trying to put that together. We're super excited about that. Working with Rodney, close with Boys and Girls Club, their teams are super excited about it because this is what we need in order to utilize our facility for the community. Commitment to HBCUs. We're working with local DJ. We want to put on a showcase for HBCU schools, whether that's through a college fair or it's through athletics where we put our turf out and allow some of the HBCU coaches to come to our facility and watch some of our local high school talent to get them on their radar. So, because there is a lot of talent here, but not everybody can play at Auburn in Alabama and Georgia. So we want to open up and provide a platform for HBCUs and a direct connection to, as a pipeline to the civic center through the programs that we put on place. E-gaming ecosystem. What's that? Well, we're working with Forrest to establish an IT e-gaming ecosystem for not only our local high schools, but our amateur players. We want to do Friday night lock-ins. Mr. City Manager, you mentioned that probably about three weeks ago, and I said I can't wait to present to him what we've already been working on. This is an effort for us, it's old-school. They used to do Friday night basketball lock-ins. Well, guess what? Nobody's outside as much as they are. They're playing video games. So we're going to try to do a Friday night lights lock-in, parents dropping your kids off at 8:00 PM, chaperone throughout the night to come back and pick them up at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, and we're going to do it through e-gaming. And it's going to be an ecosystem because they're not just coming out playing video games, we're going to have community partners teaching them how to make the video games, how to produce the video games, because that's a whole industry in itself. So we want to put on this program that we're going to try to start this summer, and our aim is to do a kickoff on Father's Day. So it's going to be a father-daughter, father-son e-gaming tournament at the civic center, and that will be our kickoff to our Friday night series of Friday night lock-ins. So that is our commitment to the community. We are working on a Cinco de Mayo event with one of our best vendors, Spanken Spoon. We're so excited about that. You know, it's going to be outdoors, socially distant, but we're giving one of our local but we're giving one of our local businesses an opportunity to utilize our space to get their brand out. And we're going to continue to do those items throughout the summer. And we're going to utilize the weather and utilize our real estate. We're going to revamp the backyard and amphitheater that hasn't been used in three or four or five years. And when I take people back there and give them a tour, they say, "I forgot this is back here. This is so beautiful." So that's what the future kind of looks like, our future growth. So if you take a look at just some of these images, this is the vision that I have when I go to bed at night about the building that we're in. Updated concessions with that Southern hospitality feel that fits Columbus. Full utilization of, of our property. Taking a look at our back amphitheater, being able to host fundraisers for local singing groups, dance groups, and then being able to utilize our, our backyard for, to invite their guests to raise funds. And new courtyard experience. We're going to up, upgrade our courtyard where it's going to actually be a part of our anchor tenant RFP. So if you bid on that courtyard, you will get the adjacent concession stand. And now you'll be able to utilize that courtyard all throughout the year, not just on Event Day. So let's say you want to do something for St. Patty's Day, and I'm just throwing out a name, and you are A&amp;B Wings. And you want to throw a St. Patty's Day event. Well, if you purchase the rights to that anchor tenant, you'll be able to host that event in the courtyard at any time. It's going to be such a great space because you can even operate your business. You could do a Thursday, Friday brunch at the Civic Center, outdoor, socially distanced. We can do that right now and we will. It's going to come in our new anchor tenant RFP. So once, once that RFP gets ready to come out, I'm going literally door-to-door to all the restaurants and say, "Hey, I think you might want to take a look at this. This is going to be interesting. This is going to be a new platform for you to, you have an extension of your business and get those impressions." You can make your money back in one event. We get 5,000 people. Hopefully by the end of the year, going into next year, your investment into us is going to be recouped in one event. So the future is now. And I'm not preaching or submitting anything to you that hasn't been done by any directors. But for transparency, I had this conversation with my mom last night. I said, "Mom, these have been presented to them before, these ideas. It's not, you know, not going to be anything new or hasn't been discussed. How do I get, how do I get that to internalize what I'm presenting?" And she say, she told me, she said, "Well, you have to look at the silver lining between COVID-19. People are going to start to realize how important their family is and how important that time is that you spend with them." And so when the opportunity presents itself and the restrictions roll back and we get into a safer standpoint, people are now going to realize that you can't get that time back. And so they're going to want to come to what you have to offer. So you have to present it to them and explain it that these are going to have returns on investments because people are going to come because they want to spend that time that they may have lost with their families. And they're not going to take it for granted. And so I want to be ready when that time presents itself. And I think we have a plan in place to do that. And, and I'm going to continue to work every single day to make sure that we execute that plan.
Rob, thank you. Tell you what, we, I know we've, we've patted a lot of our employees on the back. And I just, I got to lift Rob up, not only for the innovation that you guys have seen in this, in this presentation, but also for his willingness to just get things done. As we've worked through the pandemic and the, and the vaccinations, I tell you, the, his staff at the Civic Center have been a key component to trying to pull off anything we've tried to do down there. So I just, I appreciate you and I appreciate your innovation. Counselor, Rob?
I just wanted to give you one last kudo. Thank you. We had the conversation right after you got here. You're probably one of the few employees that came into a job where you were dependent on the public and the pandemic hit. So you have really, really, really reached down deep to find new ideas and bring ideas with you from your previous experiences. So I appreciate you and all the people that you work here with the city. I'm sure everybody's looking at you trying to figure out how to up the revenues. So keep doing what you're doing and we'll be here for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for?
Sorry I went long. I kind of got excited, as you can see.
No, that's fine.
Ms. Mayor and Council, let me just thank Rob Landers for this presentation. And I, I think we, the, the selection team did well when they identified Rob. He has been a true leader and he has, I was having a conversation with him and I'll try and be brief with this as well so that Haley can come on. And, and my conversation with him led me to have a conversation with all of the staff. Conversation with Rob Landers was about him challenging the people at the Civic Center. And he shared with me that he told them that he's looking for leaders and leadership and not just managers. And, and so in other words, he was saying he's looking for both. Yeah, I need both at this moment and at this time. And it made me go and think about what he said to me. And, and, and I had the same conversation with all of the department heads about looking for leaders and leadership and managers needing both. And, and basically when I was talking to Rob to sum it up, he, he talked about leaders looking beyond the moment, the day, the week, looking out in the next year and, and the years to come and preparing for that future. And a manager just wants to hold it in the road in some instances. And, you know, I just, I don't want to think outside the box. I just want to do what I got to do to keep, keep the wheels on the road and keep it running. And he was looking for someone who could not only keep it in the road and keep it running, but we got to look to the future and prepare for the future and provide that leadership and, and meet the challenge of the 21st century tomorrow and what people are looking for. And, and that is what I see that he is, is demonstrating in what he presented today. He's not just trying to hold the Civic Center in the road and keep it operational until he's out of there. He's trying to prepare Columbus, Georgia to be competitive, not just in the region or in the state, but beyond by what we saw in his presentation today. And it'll make you think and, and it'll make you know that if we don't do this, someone is thinking like Rob in some other community. And when we look around, we're going to be trailing them and then we're going to wonder why. So I just want to thank you for your vision and your, your thought process and not just coming to Columbus to be the manager of the Civic Center, but providing that leadership and trying to, to take us on into the 21st century like what competitive, cutting-edge cities are doing. And that's where you're trying to take us in, and I appreciate that. So thank you for the presentation today.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So next, we're going to have Haley Tilery.
Hello, everyone, and good afternoon. It's been a while since we have officially had an update at the Trace Center. So thank you for this time and letting me update you on all the things that have been taking place. Before I get started with the presentation, I have to give recognition where it's deserved. I had to take a moment to recognize the Trace Center team. We have never stopped working through this pandemic. And that includes our catering partner as well with Spectra Ovations. I look around and I see all the things we've accomplished. And I know that if it wasn't for them, it wasn't for them believing in what the mission was, there's no way we could have done this. I can make plans all day long, but if I don't have someone that believes and can help execute the plan, then what time is wasted anyway? So I want you all to know that everything you see today, everything I share with you, it did not happen alone. It happened because I have a Trace Center team here that believes in our mission and serving this community, making a difference and creating remarkable experiences. And even during a pandemic, we have done that. We constantly have heard these words throughout this year, pandemic, COVID-19, virus, unforeseen times, the new normal. But one thing I know for sure is we have a bright future. And I can say that with full confidence. I also know I never thought I would have to run an event facility in the middle of a pandemic. But I will say, I've learned a lot. Our team has grown from this and it's provided us an opportunity for the future that is ahead. So as you know, FY '21 was going to, was projected to be as one of the biggest years for the Trace Center as far as events we had scheduled. The momentum was incredible. On April 3rd, 2020, Governor Kemp mandated a shutdown for all non-incentual business. For the first time in 40 years, I had to lock our building. But our communication did not stop. One thing I knew for sure is even though at first we thought this was just going to last a few weeks, I quickly learned that those weeks turned into months and could possibly be years on the recovery from this pandemic. But instead of sitting back and thinking about all the negative, our team jumped into action. We created a Trace Center reopening plan and this took place back in March and April. I knew when the moment came where we could unlock our doors, we had to be able to be prepared. Additionally, with all the different industry professionals around the nation, no one has experienced something like this before. There's no guidelines. How do you have an event? How can you tell a bride they can get married again? So we quickly went to action and made a COVID-19 playbook, not just for us, but how other industries across the state and nation could also perform. This is located on our Trace Center website. And if you ever have an opportunity, these are great documents that have now been used across convention centers nationwide. We also wanted to make sure we were protected. So many different forums and working with Lucy, making sure that our addendums were where they needed to be to make sure when guests did come have events, our city was protected on every measure. The team came together quickly and we took this time to realize how can we have a standard that's now going to go forward forever, meaning sanitation systems. We've always been a clean facility, but now it's time to take it a step further. We want our clients to feel confident when they walk through our doors. We have the hand sanitizer installation. I remember back when we were having Toast of the Town, I happened to ask our assistant director to go purchase some hand sanitizer and to go ahead and get a case and a few more than what we normally would purchase. About two weeks later, you couldn't find it on the shelves. We also came up with our Be Smart acronym. And this was telling our clients when you come back to be smart, Colga. Remember to shield your cough and sneezes, wear a mask in public, stand six feet apart, rinse your hands frequently, and keep your area tidy. This little acronym has been used throughout every event. We even have little cards that we give our guests as they come in. Our sanitizer spray, additional signage, temperature checks, social distancing signs. You've heard all the works and we're doing that here. Even now, thankfully having free water dispensers where people can, hands-free, where they can fill up water bottles. Our catering team went straight to work to get Safe Serve certified because not only are we hosting events, but we're dealing with food and beverage. And there's a whole different animal that comes into that and making sure people are safe. And I'm grateful to have the leadership that Jennifer Brown and Chef Chris took into action to make sure that our guests felt confident when having food and beverages at their events. And of course, every diagram was socially-distanced customized. You can see here some examples of what our team went to action. Every chair that you see in here is being sanitized before an event actually takes place. Hand sanitizer stations all throughout the building. And then temperature checks. We allow every client to have this option. Even though it's not required anymore, we want clients to know if they feel safe to have their events, we will provide this service. One other thing that we did is knowing that it's time for us to be able to provide a more virtual component platform for our clients. The sales team rely on diagramming systems to communicate with clients. And one thing with social tables that, which is our diagramming platform, we were able to show a client a 3D rendering of their room design. They could actually drop a placeholder, walk around on their event, be able to see their event in a 3D platform before even walking through our doors. In fact, during this time, we recruited new clients, state conferences, that only booked us by seeing a 3D diagramming as well as virtual calls through our cell phones, through other devices without even walking foot in our building. Our doors reopened on May 27th and we were able to do that because we had a plan. Now, no plan is 100%, but we had something that we felt that would be safe. Something that I can put my name on it to say if a guest comes in, they would have an opportunity to socially distance and have an environment that they feel comfortable in. This also included virtual tours and all the COVID planning mentioned previously. Our very first event was a wedding. Now, I can tell you my nerves were a little high on that day. But I will tell you, it was a great moment that I didn't have to call abroad and tell them that their wedding was going to be canceled. Never dreamed in a million years that would be part of my job description. But to be able to bring it back, to be able to see that special moment, to me, that was a turn that we were going to be able to keep moving forward. We had many special weddings and they may, they looked a little bit different than what an average wedding would look like. We had mini weddings with no more than 50 people. We had the DJs get creative on how to make sure the dance floor did not get too occupied. We also had screenings, masks being worn. It looked different, but the end goal was still being able to be accomplished for these couples. We had to get creative with our catering team. As you can imagine, it was a lot of cancellations and we understand that. But we still had talent that, in our building, that we had to keep because we knew that this is temporary. We know that we're going to come back. So we ended up doing ironworks curbside family dinners. And I think many of you got to experience that throughout the many months that we did this. You have a world-renowned chef making an amazing dinner that you can just pick up from the Trace Center and take home to your family. And this was a time when we were doing that where those needs were hard to come by. And so it was great to be able to provide that. We went a step further with Rotary and we're grateful for their partnership during this time. And we were able to provide meals to the healthcare workers all throughout this community to let them know, "We're here with you. We're all in this together." Because this virus has impacted every single one of us in a different way. We try to be the best partner we can to the city and I hope that has shown. Through Trace Center, we were able to host a safe environment for early voting, which became one of the highest return in votings that the city has seen in decades. We also have helped host the graduations for the Chief of Police as well as the Fire Department so that they could have a safe environment to graduate for all of the work they put in. We try our best whenever the city needed us to be that resource, including city council. We want to be great partners to provide a great, safe environment. The next few months of our year was filled with new and exciting events, but they were done in many different ways than the norm. We had gyms having their local studios meet outside, socially distanced on our exhibit floors since they couldn't meet in their smaller head areas. We had ballet rehearsals. We recruited sporting events that we've never seen before. Career fairs to help people find jobs. We had our marriage conference that took place. Sporting events and virtual conferences for the first time to be able to support a client on having a virtual conference through our facility. As you can see, these are a few of our pictures. We also partnered with the Columbus Ballet since they couldn't host their normal ballet to do a whole virtual ballet experience through our facility. I do want to highlight one event that we did for Georgia High School Dance is be able to have a socially-distanced dance competition. And within 15 minutes, we had every team rotating in and out. And I will tell you, it was the first time being able to organize something like that, but it was done safely and effectively. One thing I want to highlight right here is our biggest conference that we have in Columbus every year is the Georgia Thesmeme Conference. I look forward to one day where every month we're hosting a conference of this size. But as you can see, it was virtual this year, but you'll see it looked very much like the Trace Center. I worked with a client to find a partner to make a very Columbus-filled environment, even though they were not in our facility. As you can see, this is our Trace Center lobby and the students got to experience the Trace Center and the city of Columbus in a very virtual platform. But I am glad to say they're coming back in person next year. Another thing that we desire to do is throughout the events of the year, we always try to have signature events. These are events that the Trace Center actually hosts from start to finish and they always go back to our need in our community. And when having events like this during the pandemic, I wanted to be very cautious on how we executed these events. But I also know families in our community was desiring something for their families to be able to experience in a safe environment. We ended up hosting our Princess for a Day event, which benefits Easter seals with children with disabilities. This was our second annual event and we had it here in South Hall where every station was spread apart and everybody, those children had that experience that they thought would not be able to have. In fact, we've already scheduled the new one this year. We went live on Friday. It's already received 325 shares and sold out within less than 24 hours. Additionally, we, we have our local mini-market. In the past, this was our Southern Love and Junkin' Show, but we truly wanted to focus on all the local businesses that were impacted by this virus. We partnered with Uptown Columbus and we were able to have a very safe and distance fall event in our community. I had some business owners come up to me and say, "We made our money that we have not seen in three months." To know that we were able to To know that we were able to partner that in our building and create an environment that was safe, it was incredible. We decided at Christmas time to do a similar event called the Merry Market, and this was another way for small businesses to have an opportunity to recoup sales. Our Breakfast with Santa event is an annual event we have every year, where all proceeds go to Children's Miracle Network. We ended up having this event in a very different, but safe setup. We raised more money than we've ever had before for the hospital. It was such a huge success, and I had to keep the tickets limited, that we ended up doing a Cookies with Santa in order to keep the funds coming for CM&amp;H. We recently just had our Cookies with the Easter Bunny, where all proceeds for this event went to Paul's Humane Society. Again, a very socially-distanced event for these families to create memories that they may not be able to because of this virus in the past. I briefly want to mention our future with hotels. I am so excited of the growth of the future hotels in our convention district. It's already showing positive results. Even though we have not been able to have as many events or conferences or conventions, we are planning for the future, and we are working with our partners. So glad that during this time, that the Marriott was able to do their renovation. As you know, the AC Hotel opened up last week, a beautiful facility that we're already booking clients for their events, as well as Hotel Indigo. And this is only a start, because our partnerships with them and bringing back the momentum that fall is going to come, we know that these rooms are going to be filled, and that's only the future for the Trade Center. Now, I do want to end with some transparent truths and numbers. Everything you saw was the positive, because I want to look back on this time and know, you know, we did have some positive moments throughout this past year. Moments that we will grow from, moments that we will learn from, and continue to be able to be what the Trade Center needs to be. So just know, these numbers are based on our February 2021 P&L statement. Our total revenue is down negative 35.6%. Now, taken to granted, we had many cancellations. I'm so proud of our team. That percentage could be a lot more, but because of the dedication that we have taken with our clients, that's where we're currently at. Space rental is down negative 25.1%. We are controlling costs and expenses the very best as possible. Right now, we're negative 4.4% less than the average. But keep in mind, right now, when no F&amp;B is coming in, we have to cover the shortfall. Currently, our FY '21 catering expenses have been $165,000, and total expenses, including FY '20, when this pandemic hit, $292,000. We have currently, this has been tracked since March, when we had an event, this is something that we were tracking for this new year, when people canceled due to COVID, has been 863,000 loss and rental revenue. For F&amp;B, it's a 2.4 million loss from these events canceling. I want to say, I am very grateful for the CARES Act purchase, because those purchases have allowed us to have the tools that we need to build confidence back in our clients, to show them what we're doing to have a safe environment. And that has shown through videos, emails, and our clients have been responding to that. I'm very hopeful for support with American Rescue Plan. We have a list of things that we want to recover from, because we know there's a bright future ahead. We just want to be prepared. Our overall deficit year-to-date is $315,000, which I'm projecting that's going to be close to a million by the end of this fiscal year. But still, it could have been a lot worse if it wasn't for our dedicated team. I do want to end with this. The hospitality industry has been impacted by this pandemic than any other thing that they've ever faced before. But we see brighter days. We're getting phone calls every day for people to wanting to book their future events. Our clients who had to cancel their annual events are already working with us to be able to see how we can customize their event to make people feel safe. And even though this has been a long journey, there is a bright future for us to continue. And I'm excited to lead our team into that and having the support of City Council on what we're doing together for the city. Thank you all.
Thank you, Haley. Counselor Huff?
Thank you so much for the presentation and all that you do, and I'm always so proud. How long have you been with us now?
September will be five years already.
Wow, wow, wow. Seems like you just got here.
I know, but I love every single day.
Yeah, but thank you, thank you, because when you came in, we had a conversation about some things, and you had some ideas about the future. And I think what has served this government so well is to have a lot of young minds in place during the pandemic, because it's been a lot of thinking outside of the box, and I'm sure you all have been challenged by the mayor and city manager, to think outside of the box and make this government run. And I've been through this on several occasions, because just passing through to check on things, because I was not real comfortable going anywhere. But I was just really fascinated with the virtual conferences and people taking time to book a virtual conference and come from one city to our city.
Yeah.
To spend money. So, great job.
Thank you. And you mentioned virtual. We actually have a virtual conference going on right now. We have 20 people in attendance in person, but the rest are joining remotely. So we have the technology that's helping assist with that, thanks to the CARES Act.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Haley, you know, the hospitality industry, as you pointed out, really took it on the chin. I mean, it was our convention business bureau, our hoteliers, our restaurants, and certainly our conventions and our entertainment centers have really, really been impacted. And I think it's only through the cohesive teams that you and Rob Landers have put together, and the innovative way that you took a look at the circumstances, realized you couldn't do a whole lot about it, and how do we make the best out of the situation? And then also how you have had the vision, just as Rob did, to prepare for our emergence from this pandemic. And I tell people, every time I have an opportunity to speak, I talk about the momentum that Columbus had going into this, and I always finish by telling them that I really do believe, because of our people and our venues, we're going to exit this with more momentum than most cities in the state of Georgia. I firmly believe that. I think the pieces are in place, and I think you guys have done just an awesome job on trying to prepare for those days. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Haley? Appears not.
And Mayor, I do want to thank Haley for her awesome leadership before and during the pandemic, and she comes to my office every other month or so and provides an update on the Trade Center, and she always, she just blows me away, and I tell her that, you know, with her reports and information. But awesome leader. We've got two awesome venues in the Columbus Civic Center and Trade Center, and the great thing is, we have two awesome leaders, in Rob Landers and Haley Tiller. So thank you for your leadership. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's agenda for today.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, I have one item of information. It's a memorandum from me with regards to the 2021 Districting Commission. Item number two is a resolution excusing Counselor Barnes from today's meeting, as well as the March 30th meeting.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item three is a resolution excusing Counselor Huff from the March 30th meeting.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem and motion second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Item number four, Mr. Mayor, I would like to withdraw. Item five are minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion for Mayor Pro Tem that the minutes be received. Is there a second? Counselor House, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Passed.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Woodson from today's meeting.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next are board appointments, Mr. Mayor. We have the Crime Prevention Board, this, the seat of Captain Herman Miles. This is a law enforcement agency seat. He's not eligible to serve another term of office.
Okay, we'll bring you a, I'll call you with a representative to take Captain's place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the board of elections and registration. Dr. Edwin Roldan was nominated.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, Employee Benefits Committee. Fire Marshal Jonathan Kevin Lott, who's with Fire Mayor Mess, was nominated to succeed Captain Bill Ron. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation, Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Crabbe. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No.
The Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, Ms. Marvel Barito was nominated to succeed Ms. Rose Spencer. She may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
And for the Tree Board, Ms. Farah Duesberry was nominated to succeed Ms. Beverly Kenner, as yet large member. She may be confirmed.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from Counselor Davis. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council district appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Civic Center Advisory Board, the District Six seat is available. Community Development Advisory Council, the District Seven and District Nine seats are open for nomination. Next, the Council Districting Commission. For Council District One, on behalf of Counselor Barnes, he is nominating Byron Hickey to serve in this position. He may be confirmed.
Okay, motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. He's confirmed.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, did you want to offer your Council District One, or did you want me to just come back?
I'll give mine to you. I wanted to see who the counselors were going to appoint.
Okay. We'll go down to council district listing. District Two? Pete Robinson? He may be confirmed.
There's a motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
District Three? Okay, thank you. Council District Four, Counselor Tucker? Wayne Hales? He may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem?
Wayne Hales was nominated for the Council District Four seat.
Is there a second? There's a motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem. Was there a second? Second from Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Hales is confirmed.
Council District Five, Counselor Crabbe? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, Mr. Bush? He may be confirmed.
Confirmation, Counselor House, second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Council District Six, Mayor Pro Tem?
Rick Boren.
He may be confirmed.
Motion from Counselor Davis, second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Boren's confirmed.
And then we'll bring back Council District Seven and Eight, Counselor Woodson and Counselor Garrett's seat. Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the Council District Five seat is available and open for nominations. For the Recreation Advisory Board, the seat of John Lawson, Mayor Pro Tem Allen is nominating Mr. David Miles, and he may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second? Second from Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed. Counselor Huff, do you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to go back just one to District Three's representative would be Reverend Oscar Days, D-A-I-S-E.
He may be confirmed.
Second. Motion from Mayor Pro Tem, and I think the second was Counselor Huff. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
We have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. The Tree Board, we have two seats that are open for nominations. Next, we have upcoming board appointments, the Board of Family and Children's Services, Columbus Aquatics Commission, Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Pension Fund Employees' Board of Trustees, Region Six Regional Advisory Council for Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities, and the Retirees Benefits Committee. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, as council members may recall, we always, in the month of May, look at the proposed budget as proposed by the mayor, and we are going to do that again this year. There's a little quirk. Typically, we meet every Tuesday in the month of May to go over the budget. This year, Director Alexander and the city manager and I are going to talk about whether or not we need to meet that first Tuesday in May. Two meetings ago, council moved to eliminate that meeting. So if we do need to come back, then we'll need some kind of motion to take away that resolution to not to have the meeting the first Tuesday. What we typically do is that first Tuesday, and this is not necessarily what we're going to do this time, the city manager and the finance director, and I need to talk about this, but what we typically do is that first Tuesday, we meet at 5:30, and then the second Tuesday, make sure I'm saying this right, we meet much longer than that. The first meeting, the finance director will go over the budget with us and show it. And then the second, third, and fourth meetings is when the department heads come, and if they need to make a presentation to council to bring us together. But the second Tuesday is typically a longer meeting. The third Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday wrap up what the department heads need to tell council, so that we can propose the budget. It has to go through public hearing, it has to be published, you know, all of that kind of stuff, the end of May and into June. Isn't that right, Mr. City Manager? And then it will go into effect July 1st. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up for that scheduling, because it is different than some of the scheduling that we have been doing, particularly during the pandemic. So we'll get back with the mayor and the city manager and whomever else needs to, to make sure that we're on track for adoption. I believe, Ms. Alexander, it has to be adopted by the first of June, doesn't it? Isn't it? Aren't we looking at the first of June?
Hit your light again.
Okay. We just want to make sure we meet all of those.
Just a minute, hit your light again. Somehow it turned it off. There we go.
All right, thank you. And I see the finance director's making her way to the podium, but just a couple of things, and I'm sure she'll say this, but the mayor will present his budget to this body on the 27th, which is actually...
Of April.
Of April, which is actually the next meeting. He will present his budget. And then from there, as you mentioned, typically, we would come back at that first meeting of May and have a budget meeting, presentation.
of May and have a, a present, a budget meeting, presentation, and typically that is the proclamation meeting, and we meet just before the proclamation meeting at 5:30, as you said. And, and then each Tuesday thereafter, we go from there, but...
Right. So that's the schedule. In terms of what the action that council took a couple of weeks ago is in accordance with the tentative schedule. The tentative schedule only has the three meetings in May, but I, you know, after a conversation with the city manager, you know, last week, the thought was, we just want to make sure that we have enough time, you know, in terms of the budget process. I believe that we could make it work with the three meetings, but, you know, I'll leave that up to the Budget Review Committee, the city manager, in terms of if we need the, to recall, to bring back that meeting on May 4.
Well, Ms. Alexander, if you will get with the city manager and you guys make a decision if we need that or not, and let's get it out as quickly as we can so council members can get it on their, on their calendar. I, I think we need to leave it up to you. You guys are the ones that, that know more about this than anybody else, so...
Well, we'll send you budget chair, Madam Budget Chair, a proposed schedule.
Okay.
And then if you accept that, then that's what we'll work with.
Okay, and, and let's get it out as quickly as we can so these folks can put it on their calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And if any of you have suggestions about what we need to do with this, get it to either Ms. Alexander or the city manager or to me, and we'll, we'll move from there. If we're going to meet on that first Tuesday, we have already taken action to cancel that meeting, so we may need to revisit.
Mr. Mayor, I did just...
Counsel, yes.
I'm sorry. I did just want to state that the Budget Review Meeting, it can still be held even though the mayor's proclamation session has been canceled.
We can still...
We'll figure out what we need to do, so we're legal.
Thank, that's, thank you. That's a good point. So we can, we can go ahead and schedule it if it's determined it's needed, so we'll, we'll follow the budget chair's recommendation and allow the finance director and city manager to determine the necessity of that. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. All right, if there's no other business, we need a, Counsel Huff, hold on. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got a text here wanting me to let you know and the council to know that Ann Oliver at the Marriott is retiring, and she wanted you to know and us to know.
Oh, okay.
That she'll be retiring to let us know to, that she won't be there much longer, and then we can do, probably do something, I guess, to congratulate her on her time.
She's done a good job for many years over there.
Yeah, but she, she definitely wanted you to know because she said she came up with you.
Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you. All right, we've got a motion, a second to go in executive session. The executive session, if I'm not mistaken, will be through this door right here, and the deputy city manager will direct you over there. So all in favor, please, oh, and the, it's to discuss litigation. So all, there was a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Anybody against? All right, good. We are in executive session. All right, we, we have returned from executive session where we, we discussed potential litigation. No votes were taken. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.